So we're going to call a meeting to order with a roll call for the meeting of June 22nd, special city council meeting for the purpose of the budget and two other items. Councilor Connell.
Present.
Is that present? Councilor Connell?
Yes, present.
Thank you. Nice to hear you. President, I'm sorry, Councilor Lane?
Here.
Council McCauley?
Here.
Councilor Connell is remote, but I don't think he's joined us yet.
Still doesn't say anyone.
Okay. He's coming in under attendees. Councilor Shan?
Present.
Councilor Tontar?
Present.
Councilor Vogel?
Present.
Council Wallace?
Present.
Councilor Zee?
Here.
Councilor Devlin?
Two are present today.
You are present today. And Councilor Argonan?
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. President, it looks like this might be very... Wait, our head president, NYMA?
Yes, I will try that. If you can unmute. Or if you promote, right click and promote.
If you don't have the option, then Jared's still...
Jared? Yeah.
Jared, can you make Richard's computer co-host?
Or Bruce, a co-host?
Uh, Richard is a co-host already.
So it should allow me then?
Yeah.
But it does not seem to be.
There you go.
Okay.
Under more.
So promote the panelists? Barry, is that you? Councilor Connell?
Yes, present.
Wonderful.
Yeah, all right, well, that worked.
Can I hear you?
Yes.
Yes, you are now president.
Thank you, Bruce.
I apologize, I don't have the video.
Well, imagine what you look like if continued.
No, we won't. He's the president of NYMA. I'm sorry, where are we, Mr.?
We did our call to order, but we're on late files, or I know late files. I think really at the beginning, subject to what anyone else thinks, we should announce that this is a public hearing on the budget, and I should read the notice.
No, we actually needed an election first.
I wouldn't disagree. So the first item on the agenda would be under our rule four, because there are two councilors that have the same length of service, we would have a quick round robin election to see who would serve since Councilor Argonan, the president, is not here, he's remote. The next is Councilor Connell, he's not here, he's remote, so that leaves Councilor Tontar and Councilor Vogel. So what I will do is go around our roll call sheet, and when I reach your name, please just state whether you are voting for Tontar or Vogel, and I will still record. First one that gets to six will be the president pro temp for the day. Are we ready to go? Any questions? Councilor Connell? Councilor Lane?
Council Vogel.
Council McCauley? Councilor Connell? Councilor Shan?
Council Vogel.
Councilor Tontar?
The next pro temp of the city council, Bruce Vogel.
Humility, Jones, it was a virtue. Councilor Vogel? Council Wallace?
Vogel.
Councilor Zee?
Vogel.
Councilor Devlin?
Councilor Connell convinced me. Council Wallace.
And Councilor Argonan?
Mr. Vogel.
It is Councilor Vogel, elected pro temp for this evening. Mr. President, pro temp, would you like to read the notice now, or would you like to do something else?
Um, I think the notice is appropriate, thank you.
It says on June 22nd, 2021, at 7:30 PM, the Zoom details will follow, I need not read those. The proposed meeting is on the operating budget, which is available for inspection at the clerk's office, 60 Pleasant Street, you report during regular business hours. Additionally, the proposed budget may be viewed online at the finance department's website. It's as simple as that. So we now have a hearing, and, Mr. President, did you want to address the agreed upon changes to the filed budget?
Did you want to go to that right now, or did you want to go to public comment?
Well, I would think it would make sense to go to that now, then we have a budget as it is agreed upon change in front of the body, whether they're public comment or not.
Thank you, then let's do that.
So there are... This has been sent out to all the councilors, there's by, I believe, the finance director. I'm just going to read them. There's a page 60, budget contingency, original proposal was zero, revised proposal $325,770. There's page number 61, general administration, budget contingency, $325,770 is now zeroed out, that's a merit to the above. We have public services department, object 52103, highway streetlights, $25,000, revised proposal $45,000, change of $20,000. Again, public services department, highway sidewalks, $350,000 is now $370,000, change of $20,000. Youth services, object 51164, salary administrative assistant, $8,0910, revised proposal $35,640, change of $26,730. And lastly, object 51190, new salary, acting coordinators, zero, is now revised proposal of $70,000, for a proposed total general fund of $74,920,632.
Motion approved collectively?
Second.
Roll call.
May I speak, Mr. President?
Sure.
I just wanted to address a question about 51164 and 51190. So my understanding from the administration is that the shift here was that there will be a transfer from the youth services revolving fund to fund these two, and that that would be expected to be an ongoing transfer each year. So my question is, will there be acceptance of lowering the revolving fund limit to represent $100,000 now, that effectively will always be transferred off, rather than having to get, go through the revolving fund? Does that make sense? So the current limit, I think, is $535,000, so to me, this is $100,000 coming off the top, so it would be logical to lower that to $435,000. Correct. Thank you, Mr. President. Bring that in next time.
All right. Any other more debate on that? Same note, how about a roll call?
Roll call on the motion approved and changes in the proposed budget. Councilor Connell?
Yes.
Councilor Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Councilor Connell?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
Yes.
Councilor Tontar?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Councilor Zee?
Yes.
Councilor Devlin?
Yes.
Councilor Argonan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, next we have the public comment. I see one person that would hand raise, are there any others over there?
Just two.
Just two. All right, let's take the ones that are in-house with us.
No, sir, I'm waiting, I'm not sure if you can hear it.
Yeah, right here, you want to up yourself? You want to come sign in and I'll...
Oh.
Make it easier on the clerk to have your name memorialized. All right. First to speak, Bruce Menon.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the councilors who are giving me this opportunity to speak. I urge your full and enthusiastic support of the school budget as submitted tonight. I do also want to address some questions that were raised recently about choice funds, the amount of them, and how the district uses them. I offer you and the greater community some facts, they're not my facts, these are facts you can look up. Choice is a revolving fund with very significant restrictions on how it can be spent. It's not a true stabilization fund because of those restrictions, you can't spend it on anything. It's not city money raised through taxes, it's not state money, it comes from sending districts, Triton, Amesbury, and Penn Top. Concerns have been raised about how the district spends that money. Because of the restrictions on spending, it isn't unusual for the district to commit some of those funds to balance the coming year's school budget, saving the city tax dollars. It is also not unusual to spend choice on pilot, to improve the quality of education, nor for all students. Choice funds are subject to at least two annual audits. In my 20 years on the school committee, I'm not aware of a single odd exception flagging misuse of those funds. We comply with all statutory spending and reporting obligations. So with regard to other, to choice and other school funding issues and management issues, the following is true, and it's been true for the 20 years I've been privy to so long in school. The school committee is elected to run the schools. The statutory authority to determine how all school funds are spent lies solely with the committee. Responsibility of the council is to approve, or amend our budget, or not approve, and by amending, that means subtracting, because the council can only reduce, not add, anything to the budget that the school committee has approved, nor can you direct funds to any specific aspect of the submitted budget. If you want more direct input into the way education is delivered, there are three school committee seats in the upcoming elections, come on in, we'll respond. Decision to open or close choice seats is by statute an annual decision made by the school committee. Your opinion is welcome, but you don't have the authority or the expertise to make that decision, so it isn't and it shouldn't be by you. Appreciate your feedback. Now have two recent legal opinions, one from the city solicitor, and one from the district legal council, paid for by taxpayer money, both affirming exactly what the district has been telling you all year long. The district is in full compliance with the spending restrictions and accounting for that money, and the school committee has full authority over this spending. In fact, according to the legal opinion from the district legal council, the city council cannot also cut the school budget, force the district to spend choice funds. Any such motion should be ruled out of order, not just on the dubious merit, but because there's no statute that supports your authority to do that. Please take all of this into account, and remember that everything the school committee says, and everything the city council says, will do here tonight and always, will impact in a profoundly meaningful way 2,200 students, their families, and the lives of the staff of the largest employer in the city government. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Jane Snow?
Jane Snow, I'm Coffin Street. I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to all of you that have been involved in this budget process. There's been seven meetings, hearings by the budget and finance committee, they have been very eye-opening, it's a great opportunity to hear the questions that the council asks of all the different departments, their responses, how the departments put things together and share with them what, you know, where they're headed, what they've had to deal with, what they need. And until you listen to all those pieces, and there are a million, let me tell you, it's very hard for you to understand the horrendous job that the council has trying to make all those pieces go together, and to satisfy the needs of the community, and also the needs of the department. It is not an easy task. So I really applaud you for all of the hours, and I know you take this very seriously, and you've had a lot of sleepless nights, and I so appreciate it, and I wish more people would come and listen to the budget hearings, especially now we have the golden opportunity to do it online, because it really does help to understand that it isn't just, you know, one department, I have needs, you know, I'm first, you have the job of making, you know, running the village, and making sure that everything goes smoothly. And again, this was done the past year during the pandemic, and I can't thank you enough for all that you did, everybody, workers, council, administration, you know, all the people, we've done that a lot, we've contributed a lot, and all of their input and their explanations have been patient, thorough, and well appreciated. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Callahan?
Hello, Brian Callahan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Brian Callahan, 29 Warren Street, thank you for hearing me, I called out not being a person this evening. Speaking as a school committee member, not representing the entire school committee, I cannot speak to the group, but certainly as one of them, well, as chair. The idea of taking away $400,000 from the city allocation from our budget, it is a shock to me. I know the entire council is not in favor of this, and I'm not here to single any member out, but to address the council as a whole about the suggestion, after the school committee has done months of work, multiple budget hearings, and due diligence about our school budget, which we all voted for unanimously. Unlike any other department in the city that's scrambling for money, the school committee is an elected body. Over 3,800 people voted for me to do what is best for the schools, and that's what I try to do every day. The school administration works tirelessly with us to come up with a fair, balanced budget. I've always asked Superintendent Gallagher to ask for more, to show strength to the city about how much he and the rest of us want invested in our schools. And this year, we did just that. Now councilor suggested we should lose $400,000 in allocation and be forced to use our choice money, which to clarify to anyone listening, as Bruce Menon stated, is not new report taxpayer money, is both a bad idea and sets a bad precedent for future budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Eddings, I'm not sure, at the beginning of the meeting, I should have made the announcement that you may speak on anything that's on the agenda?
The question.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I see trees written here, feel free.
There's a line item in the budget for trees, I think it's worth about $90,000.
Feel free.
This has been an ongoing effort by myself and a neighbor on the street, we have noticed that our trees were disappearing at a rapid rate, most of them are Norway maples, and we've been advised by the city tree commission kind of press, that a couple of those are going to have to go pretty soon as well, because of their condition, that's going to leave our street.
Could you move back five trees so the owl can see?
Perfect. I didn't know it was an owl. Was a tree of this owl.
That's a who.
Could you also state your name and address?
It's Keith Eddings, K-E-D-I-N-G-S, I live at April Spring Street. It's one of the city's most beautiful streets, if you haven't been there yet, and it needs more trees, which is why I'm here. We just wanted to replace our Norway maples, so what we, as they come down, so what a neighbor, Jack Santos, and I did, is we organized the neighborhood to collect the money to pay for our own trees, to actually buy these trees, to the price of the great old trees. We walked the street with Connie Preston, chairman of the tree commission, and she advised us, we might be able to support up to 12 more trees, based on overhead utilities and underground utilities. We marked those streets in chalk, put letters in our neighbors' mailboxes about this, and we went home whenever we saw them. Anyway, in all, as of last week, I think we raised about $2,700, which basically means we met our goal, we can plant 10 trees with that, and it requires the city's partnership to do this, there is a line item in the budget for trees, it's $100,000, I think two-thirds of that is for maintenance, and a third of that is for planting new trees. We would be, Connie's advised us, because we could show this initiative, that we would be included in the new trees part of that budget. So we've worked hard to do this, we, our open city will join us in this, all you've got to do is approve the budget the mayor sent to the city county, budget committee approved, because the funding is tapped there. And I think, we're displaying a tree, I think our effort shows what can be done when a tiny little neighborhood, we are one block long, teams up with a big city to get a small project done. So I hope you'll join us in that effort.
Thanks, Senator.
You reached out, we distributed to council, does it say it? At the budget committee meeting, we distributed the initial letter that we sent to neighbors, and it totally inter circulated in one place.
Sure.
Thank you for your support. Thank you.
All right. That concludes the public comment.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Yep.
Point of order?
Go ahead.
There is another hearing.
Oh, oh. Sorry, I missed it. Yeah, I see it. Sean Riordan?
Hey, I'm Sean Riordan, 5 Low Street, thanks for having me on tonight, I just kind of wanted to echo my colleagues from the school committee, Brian Callahan, Bruce Menon, I really hope you all step up and approve the full budget from the school committee tonight. I too have been on just about most of these budget hearings, I did just a couple, but it is an amazing process, I want to give a shout out to particularly the budget and finance committee of the city council, but also all the department heads who came up, and really answered all the thoughtful questions that you all came up with, you know, I will echo Jane Snow, I'd like to see some more people attend these meetings and let their voices be heard, but I think it was a thorough process, and just getting it back to the schools, I think, you know, because of, this is a different budget here, because we're dealing with S, R, one, two, and three funds, the next couple of years for the schools will be, will be a challenge budget-wise, knowing where we're going to come out of it. So I think this year, we really put together a great plan, I think Superintendent Gallagher knew what his priorities were, and as we're kind of entering into the strategic plan season, where we're working on a new five-year strategic plan, I think it's just going to be imperative to, you know, kind of have our ducks in a row, and kind of move forward in the united front to really push our schools to the next level. So again, I hope you all approve the budget tonight, and again, thank you for all your hard work, this is definitely a marathon process, you guys have been on multiple meetings for weeks now, so I just appreciate your effort, and I look forward to hearing your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that that is it, you don't see anybody else, going, gone. Next point of order?
You want to oppose the public hearing?
Motion to...
So moved? Second.
Motion to close public hearing. Councilor Connell?
Yes.
Councilor Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Councilor Connell?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
Yes.
Councilor Tontar?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Zee?
Yes.
Council Devlin?
Yes.
Council Argonan?
Yes.
That's done, it doesn't mean we get to go home. Next point of order is that we have the first reading for the building inspector, and prior to that, we do have an emergency preamble. Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, the merge preamble that reads as follows, pursuant to section 29B and further defined in section 177, emergency exists due to the fact that the matter of reference, which is appointment 254 of Dennis Morrow Jr., it addresses a critical vacancy in the building department, his appointment at the building inspector. Therefore, the city council affirmatively declares an emergency exists such that it may be voted upon at its first introduction to the council.
Mr. Speaker?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a first and second, roll call?
First and second, sorry, any debate on that?
Roll call?
I can speak to it briefly.
Please.
And so I'm the sponsor of the emergency preamble, the mayor asking to move this through quickly, as many of you know, we've had acting building inspectors for quite some time, and this adds a cost to the public as well, although it is paid by fees, so I would ask the council to consider putting this through on an emergency basis, so Mr. Morrow can get to work in the official capacity.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor?
I cannot support an emergency preamble on something like this. I think that this position is very important, I think it needs to go through proper vetting process, the public hearing process along the way. It's amazing that we've, of the timing of this, to come in on a budget night hearing, I just think that we should go through the procedural process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just want to ask a question, if the argument is that the exit of Z exists because of cost, what is the cost? What has the cost been that we have expended from the city, since it is on budget night, maybe through the chair, if the finance director wishes to answer, or the chief of staff? What have we paid in fees to temporary help, let's call it, to complete inspections? An aggregate, since the position's on being? Thank you.
Anybody else?
I do not have the figure at this time.
Any other comment?
Question, is there a contract associated with this? And if so, can we get a copy of that? Is it part of a union, or is this individual contract here?
Sure, councilor, it's, the building inspector is part of the teamsters department head union, I'd be happy to send you that contract, it's also available on the city website and the HR department.
Great. Any other comment? You have, Councilor?
I don't, I don't. Sorry, yes, I just had a more of a clarification question, I believe typically this position, would this be referred to committee? And I'm trying to remember what it means.
Yes.
Being, sorry, it would be? Is that confirmed? I apologize.
Hold on.
Mr. President?
Please follow up here.
I think Council Argonan.
Council Argonan?
If I might, yes, the building inspector under rule 20A would typically be referred to the appropriate committee.
Council Argonan?
So, may I continue?
Please. Please.
I kind of, I do agree with the council for more five, that I think that's part of our process, and especially when we have certain positions that do go to committee for further vetting and discussion, and it's hard to bypass that, and hard for me to do this on an emergency preamble, so that's kind of how I feel right now. Thank you.
Mr. President? Go ahead. Council, Argonan, go ahead.
Yes, perhaps I misunderstood, I didn't think this would be the, I didn't realize this would be the building inspector per se, what we also often call the building commissioner. I thought that acting commissioner Earls was going to fill that position, I thought this was the other position. In other words, there's someone who assists the actual commissioner, but if I misunderstood that, it sounds like I did. I'll just draw the motion.
If I may, I can explain, so we have two, we have two appointed positions in the building department.
Point of order, Mr. President? We'll draw the second.
Good luck.
So, where's that?
There's no motion approved, the emergency preamble.
So the motion, the motion to approve is still on the floor, but the second has been withdrawn.
I'll second.
We now have another second. Go ahead.
Does the first, does the first still stand? Council Argonan, you're still there?
Council Argonan, your first still stand?
I'm trying to actually get information first, which is, I thought this was not the actual commissioner's position.
That's correct, yes, it's not the, it's not the commissioner's position. And if I may, I have a little background, so we have the commissioner's position, which is not in front of you tonight, but we do have the building inspector position. This position is critical, and we were very fortunate to have it filled by a very talented individual, he's actually sitting here right now, Dennis Morrow, we figured... We figured, you know, understanding this was emergency preamble, if there were questions. Dennis has been working with us now for about a couple of months so far. He's qualified and very able to do the job. And we very much enjoyed having him here so far. With the one caveat is that he did not have his license to, 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 to conduct inspections. So we have been, as Counselor Igram mentioned, we've had this ulterior plan where we've hired, we've hired buildings, building staff that are getting their certifications and we've been utilizing contracted, interim, I guess is the term, building commissioners, and also been relying on our neighboring communities to help us as we transition to a full department. And we're about to complete that right now. So Mr. Morrow just finished his, his three tests, he passed in the flying colors. We have talked to our acting commissioner, who has given us confidence that he's, he's able, he's able to conduct inspections on his own. Because of the timing of this all, you know, it's, we don't, we don't lightly ask the council to do emergency preambles like this. But because we're heading into the summer, there's fewer meetings over the summer. We thought that we'd want to bring this to the council sooner or later to have that review. And I think I can answer any more questions.
Was there a question?
Yeah, so that, that explanation, Counsel President, just further pushed me over to not approving this. If somebody's been working here for two-plus months and we're just getting wind of an appointment because they've chosen to use their prerogative to do an interim appointment while that's going on and we have quote-unquote no official view or purview into this until now, I have no emergency here to fill this position. And I think that, I'll just say that. Thank you.
I see a hand from the building commissioner. And I remember what the will of the council would be to allow him to speak. Everybody, go ahead.
Thank you. Just to clarify. I'm Greg Earls, acting commissioner. I'm actually the department head of the building department. Just to clarify, I'm not a commissioner. I have not passed those exams. So right now, I'm the department head. What we, to put in perspective, I don't have aggregate numbers, but what we do have is that interim inspectors cost me the city fifty dollars an inspection. Today, I believe there were a dozen inspections. Every day is between six to twelve inspections. So then you can see, if we're waiting on this, that's what it's going to cost for really no reason. So that'll be two more weeks out at about, I don't know, four to six hundred dollars a day inspection. Thank you.
Anyone else in council, anyone else at all want to join in? Seeing none, I'm sorry, Mr. Counsel.
Could I just have another point of clarification? So the argument, what I've heard, not so much lately, but previously from residents, is the, how long it has taken to get inspections done. So I thought one of the, not currently, but certainly last year, there was that interim period, a long period of time while we were scouring about to get people. And is that, would, if we did not do that today, would that slow down some of the inspection processes? In your opinion? Because that also is a cost. It's not monetary cost, but it is a cost to the community.
Thank you, Greg Earls, again. Right now, we're working on at most two-day lead on inspections. To bring someone else in, we have to work against their schedule and the community they're working in. It could be up to three to four days. It could be up to five days. Right now, we try to do it the very next day when we're called in. And I think we have records to actually show that. Thank you.
Counselor Khan, then Counselor Z, then Counselor Igram.
Actually, I believe, Counselor, I will actually defer to Counselor Igram first. I know this is the term before me.
I'm sorry. You can't raise your hand on this computer?
Yeah, I appreciate it. I'm just trying to clarify, because again, going from the budget designations, the position that is the head of the department, I thought was the building commissioner. What I thought was supporting was an appointment of what the budget on page 194 calls the local building inspector. That's what I thought. So if I misunderstood, and again, I want to clarify, and I'm sorry if it's a little confusing. If we're not appointing the local building inspector, if in fact, Mr. Morrow is going to be the building commissioner, then I will draw the motion. I wouldn't want that to go anywhere.
Go ahead, Matt.
That's what.
Local, local building inspector. Local building inspector.
Counselor Igram, your, your understanding was correct. Your first understanding was correct. All right, I'm sorry, Counselor, Counselor Khan, then Counselor Z. Counselor Khan, you still want to?
Yes. Yes, I actually did. So just so, and I'm sorry, I'm being obtuse here, but I just want to clarify. So the local building inspector does not get sent to committee that appointment. So that was my one, I think, my current concern. The second one, and I'm just throwing this out there, and I hope folks can hear me, but I'm wondering, can we do a shorter term of like, where we're allowed for like the three months? Or put it to some time that we could come back and have more time to go through this? And I'm just throwing that out there, not knowing if this has been done before. So that's kind of just something to see if we can all find that balance, knowing that there is also a loss from, fiscally from the city. So is that something for those who have been on the council before? Is that something that has been done before, where we shorten the term to a shorter period? Possibly three months is what I would recommend. And then bring it up when we can, let me see it again.
Mr. Clerk?
No, I just wanted to mention, Mr. President, that rule 20A does not reflect that there is a building commissioner. I'm sure the intent was to send the building commissioner to committee. It specifically states the building inspector, which this position would be. So we have a commissioner, but a building inspector. So the rules would stand, I would think, that the building inspector would go to committee. If that answers your question, Counselor Khan.
I guess that, yes, so this would go to committee then normally?
Under our card rules, it would.
All right.
Counselor Khan, do you, do you want to let the debate continue, or do you want a motion?
No, I am asking by, for those who have been on the council longer, have we, can we shorten the term? And have some time to specify it for three months? And then have time to really bring to committee and talk if there's a need to pass now? So I'm just asking if anyone, have we done that before with appointments?
Mr. Clerk?
So I'd have to look to see what this appointment is. It's good until December 31st, 2023, which must be by ordinance, is it not? Is that a three-year term? Or two-year term? Or something resembling a three-year term?
It sounds unlikely, but.
Yeah. Section 5 dash 42 of the county code, the inspector of buildings shall hold an office, shall hold office for three years and may soon be removed by the mayor in this council.
So really, what Counselor Khan is asking is, we can't amend the ordinance tonight? We can, I don't think we can amend it.
All right, so I have first.
Okay, that, yeah, sorry. I see Council on Health and Cancer, but if we can't do anything, I still will not be in the public.
I've got, those who haven't spoke, Counselor Devlin first, and Counselor Shan, and back to Counselor Z.
Yes, we have a meeting on Monday night. And I'm not telling whoever would get this, or whatever committee would get this, but I don't know why we're just not putting this. It's going to be a long night. Let's not kill ourselves or break our brains about this. It's a small amount of money that's not on our heads that we're going to be losing between now and Monday if that committee couldn't meet before between now and Monday. And I'm not saying that they should either. I'm not saying that they should either. So, so that is totally in the committee's prerogative because we didn't create this problem. But I'd like to move on from this because we have a long night. I won't be supporting your second.
Counselor Shan?
President, I'm just, I'm just going to withdraw the motion. I, because I also, I don't even agree that we're talking about the right position here. So I'm just withdrawing.
End of the draw, the second.
The second's with Counselor Khan, Mark.
I, I'll withdraw.
Motion to receive and file the emergency?
Second.
Second.
Roll call on receiving and filing the emergency preamble.
To receiving and filing the emergency preamble, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Igram?
Yes.
Motion passes matter. The emergency preamble anyways received and filed.
Motion to refer the appointment to planning and development?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
The second was?
Any of us?
Thank you.
Counselor Shan?
Referring appointment 254 to planning and development, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Igram?
Yes.
All right. That is done. Next on the, on the agenda would be the statement of interest, the SLI, which is coming out of committee. You'll see on your agenda, it's only on the other side of the question.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. So, the second.
Need to remove.
Roll, roll call on the motion?
It's not a review.
Point of order, motion to remove from committee first?
Oh, it hasn't been.
Second.
Discussion on removing from committee? Seeing none, roll call on removing from committee?
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Igram?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
It is now on the floor.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a first and second, discussion, Counselor Khan.
Yes, thank you, Counsel President, temporary. Yes, I, folks have seen this before, and this is really about the Massachusetts School Building Authority application, the statement of interest for the high school, which was related to the roof improvement, but also the expansion for the science, kind of the science wing, the STEM kind of lab space. And in addition, we also, it was modified to make sure some of the equipment on the roof was also included as we made, as many of us have heard from the facility manager, Steve Fergal. It did not, he submitted it last year, so the application is fairly identical, except with that additional equipment being included. It did not get accepted by the MSBA board, which is the one that grants the, the, which grants the MSBA money. They did get not the applications, of which they funded sixteen projects. So we are, I think it was the who wants to continue and to reapply this year. And I hope people will support this. The information in the packet is fairly detailed, but probably not as detailed as last year. So folks, I'm interested in reading more about it. I also encourage people to look at the MSBA website, and it actually shows the projects that they did grant in 2020, which is an interesting, kind of an interesting perspective on seeing the type of projects. And I think we do, I believe that we have a really good chance, and I do hope we can get that granted this year. But I do hope folks will approve this, because it needs to be submitted by July, I believe July 1st or sometimes soon. So which is why we brought it for tonight. So if there's any other questions, feel free to let me know. Thank you.
Will of the council? Any other debate?
Roll call? Roll call on the motion to approve the statement of interest, School Building Authority. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Igram? Counselor Igram?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes, thank you. You took me out of order.
Oh. I'm going to go to that here. All right. And the next point of order would be our budgets. Mr. Clerk?
So we have in Budget Finance, Mr. President, order 248, which is blank, that either now or later should be removed from budget.
Motion to remove from Budget Finance?
Second.
Comments? Roll call, take it out?
It's a motion to remove order 248. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Igram?
All right. It's now out? Motion to approve?
Second.
And now comes the conversation.
I might ask for a clarification, so that is a motion to approve with revisions?
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
All right, as we normally do, we turn this over to the Chair of Budget and Finance. Counselor, have at it. And I will monitor for hands here. That's all right, and.
All right, counselors, sorry.
Counselor, I'll just, for a moment, I'll let you recognize anyone on the floor, and I'll recognize the Zoom.
So we're going to basically take this in the same or similar path that we took workshop seven, for those who attended, essentially a dry run of tonight. So we're going to go through the budget by, essentially by workshop. So we're going to start off on page 49, which is the city clerk, well, city council and city clerk. And it is my desire not to call out each individual group, but rather to just go by general department. So I'm not going to call Personnel Services, Purchase Services, et cetera, but just to call out the group. And then, as the President stated, if you have a cut, you can raise your hand and be recognized.
Point of order?
You have a Mr. President? All, everybody's Mr. President.
I think, I think because of the way the state law is written, you have to call it by the groupings. Ethan Mann, correct me, but that's, that's the reason we do it this way. So we, you know, we're technically, what we're doing is we're voting on each grouping. That's why we call each grouping one by one. That's my understanding.
Mr. Mayor?
I know it's heated.
Yes, so the statute does require that the mayor submit a budget with the minimum level of detail being salaries and wages being one grouping, and then supplies and services being a second grouping. So it may make sense for the council to approve it as such, but I believe it's, it's your prerogative.
Okay, well, so as to avoid any doubt, we will go by it, through it by category. I'm not aware of any statute that requires us to do so, but, all right, so city council, we're going to start off with Personnel Services. Nothing. Purchase of services? Okay? So that completes the city council. Next would be City Clerk's Department, which is also on page 49. We have Personnel Services to start. Purchase of services? Okay? That completes that one. The next page is page 50, which is Board of Registars, Personnel Services, Other Charges and Expenses. Not seeing any, that's Board of Registars. Next is going to be Parking Clerk, page 51. Start off with Personnel Services. Not seeing any Purchase of Services.
Yes, I have a proposal. Motion to amend line item 53801 parking signage. Let's reduce the item from, I believe it's either six thousand or seven thousand five hundred now, down to one thousand.
The motion is to go cut sixty-five hundred from seventy-five hundred to one thousand. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, looking for discussion? Does a sponsor want to speak to the cut first? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Last, when the budget came in, we may have spent more, but when the budget came in in May, we'd only spent four hundred and seventy-nine dollars on this item. And in consultation with the Parking Clerk, there is a desire to purchase a vinyl sign to put on the side of the parking garage, but a thousand dollars should be ample to cover that. So essentially, the line item is over budgeted.
Thank you. Is anybody else supposed to speak on this cut before we take a vote? Not seeing any roll call, please, Mr. Clerk?
Okay, it's motion to cut to one thousand fifty-three eight oh one. Okay, it's motion to cut to one thousand, fifty-three-eight-zero-one, Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Ragman?
Yes.
Cut passes ten-one.
Thank you. Is there anything else on Purchase of Services where we are at the moment? Not seeing any Supplies for Parking, we're still on Parking, page fifty-one, Supplies, any cuts, any, anything? Seeing none there, we're going to proceed to the Mayor's Office on page number sixty. First, we're going to start off with Personnel Services. Not seeing any, let's move to Purchase of Services. Not seeing any there as well, and that takes us finally to zero-zero-seven, Other Charges and Expenses. Counsel Devlin?
Yes, motion to cut five-seven-eight-zero-one Mayor miscellaneous expense, two thousand dollars.
A motion is to cut five-seven-eight-zero-one Mayor miscellaneous expenses from ten thousand to eight thousand, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion, Counsel Devlin, you want to speak to it first?
Uh, yes, anybody who's watched the budgets previously, these are the type of line items that I look for. And I generally don't like, they can come back for us if they need more supplies, and if there's not a good explanation of what's inside of them. So two thousand dollar cut, bring it down to eight thousand dollars, which was what was originally asked for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, thank you.
Other councils wish to speak on this cut? Not seeing any roll call, Mr. Clerk?
It's a motion to cut fifty-seven-eight-zero-one to eight thousand dollars, two thousand dollar cut. Counselor Condon?
No.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Counselor Tontar?
No.
Counsel Vogel?
No.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Ragman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That concludes Mayor's Office, as that was the last line item in that. That takes us on to page number sixty-one, General Administration. First grouping is Personnel Services. Not seeing any, next is Purchase of Services. Don't see any there as well, next is zero-zero-four, Supplies. Not seeing any there, next is zero-zero-seven, Other Charges and Expenses. And just an editorial note, that this was one of the revised pages. The general budget contingency per our earlier vote had been moved to its own group in the same amount, just so that if you're looking in the book, in the original page, you remember where we are. Any motions there? Not seeing any, that's General Administration. Next up, we are going to have Information Technology, that takes us to page sixty-seven. First grouping is Personnel Services. Next is Purchase of Services. And finally is Supplies. Not seeing any, that concludes Information Technology. Moving on to the Auditor's Department, page seventy-five. Personnel Services. Not seeing any Purchase of Services. Not seeing any Supplies. And finally, Other Charges and Expenses. Okay, we're going to keep rolling here, next is Assessor. And that is going to be page eighty. First grouping is Personnel Services. Not seeing any hands, next is Purchase of Services. Not seeing any there, Supplies. And finally, Other Charges and Expenses. Okay, not seeing any, let's go on to Treasurer Collector, page eighty-seven. First grouping is Personnel Services. I don't see any hands, moving to Purchase of Services. Nope, Supplies. And finally, Other Charges and Expenses. Not seeing any, moving on from the Assessor. We will now go on to the Treasurer Collector, and that's going to be page eighty-seven. Personnel Services. Purchase of Services. Supplies. Other Charges and Expenses. Okay, not seeing any there. Now we're going to move towards the back of the book, as this was the order we took again in the workshop, so we're going to go on to Human Resources next. And that is going to be page two-hundred-and-fifty-four. And that's going to be Personnel Services first. Followed by Purchase of Services. Followed by Supplies. And finally, Other Charges and Expenses, HR. Yes, Counsel Lane?
So in terms of the contracts, again, was this contract that was renewed, is that aligned with the appointment dates?
I'm sorry.
There was a contract that was signed for the retarder after?
So this is in reference to five-one-one-zero-one, the department head, is that correct?
Right.
And the question is, is the contract that was executed now in line with the appointment?
There's not a signed contract.
There's, at current?
No.
Anything else for Human Resources, Other Charges and Expenses, or questions, comments? Okay? Let's move to Insurance Group, page two-fifty-five, Personnel Services. And then we have zero-one-zero, Budgeted Transfer Out. This is a transfer to the newly formed Healthcare, Health Insurance Stabilization Fund. Any questions, cuts, questions, anything? Not seeing any, okay? We're going to move on to page two-fifty-six, which is Retirement System. We have Personnel Services. Not seeing any hands, we'll move to Legal. And that's going to be Purchase of Services. Not seeing anything there as well. And the final one of this grouping, Workshop One, is Debt Service. And we're going to start off with the top part, Excluded Debt Service, zero-zero-nine. Not seeing anything there, we'll move on to Ordinary, Non-Excluded Debt Service, and then the group, where the grouping called Debt Service as well. With the, with the, sort of, if I may ask for a little bit of leniency, so I may make a proposal, with the council's okay and the President's okay? I'd like to make a motion to cut five-nine-one-hundred by the proposed one hundred thousand dollars, which is debt principal, and if the President's okay with it, I would speak to it.
Agreed.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience, I appreciate it.
Second.
Secondly.
Thank you. So this will be part and parcel of another discussion we're likely to have on five-nine-six-six-three. But the policy question I believe we have before us is, are we, a couple of questions, but first is, when are we going to spend the money on capital? And so this implies that we're going to hold the money in a line here, with the implication that we're going to issue debt. We've had lots of conversations about debt over the past several months. We had, not, in addition to our seven workshops on the budget, we also had almost an equal number of discussions on the CIP. And one of the events of that conversation was these new targets provided by the Finance Director. And one of the interesting things is he has two targets. One is spending on capital out of operating, essentially, which is what we consider free cash spending. And the other part is a debt target, trying to bring the debt and the general fund back up to where it has historically been, to fund things like roads and sidewalks, things that we've talked about all day long. And we've also had discussions about projects like Phillips Drive. And the interesting thing is this debt line doesn't support that, at least not yet, because the understanding is that we likely would not issue debt for that project until the following fiscal year. So my argument for this cut is, we've been waiting for a long time to spend money on capital. And again, I'm going to make similar comments on five-nine-six-six-three, but I don't want to bottle up any more money. I want to spend it, I'm sure my fellow Ward Councilors could chime in and perhaps back me up, but I'm sure all of us have a litany, a list of things that need to be done in our words. And I don't think what residents want to hear is we're going to sit on money for longer. And as far as issuing debt goes, particularly for roads and sidewalks, we had long debates about that a few years ago. We provided a bond order, authorizing the mayor. Frankly, it did get dumbed down a little bit by the City Council, and was reduced in its scope and its amount, but we did pass it, and to date, it has never been tapped. And it doesn't seem like there's any appetite to tap it. So locking up more money in debt service, and as I'll mention in the other one, not to get too far ahead of myself, into a capital stabilization fund with no immediate plan shown to bring it out, when there are so many needs in the city, is extremely hard to justify, in my opinion, to residents and to myself. So I'm asking you to support this cut, I think we need to move forward on capital projects. We're finally starting to get the ball rolling. You may have taken a few minutes to look at the beta report that was provided to us today, and my cursory review is that it shows you that even two million dollars a year, which is what we currently are sort of committed to, is not going to be enough to make the impact that we want. Looking at my ward, for example, over the next five years, I just don't have enough meat on the bone to go to my ward and say, don't worry, the paving trucks are coming. So that's my, that's my theory on this and my discussion. It's not that I don't want to spend the money on capital, I want to spend it sooner, and I want to spend it directly, and then do it again next year and next year, and hopefully grow it. So thank you very much, and thank you for allowing me to do this, thank you.
Further discussion?
Just a point of clarification, so you are arguing against borrowing money, all right? And therefore increasing the need for paying principal. That's why you want to cut the amount of the fund for principal by a hundred thousand? Do you not quite understand where you're going with this?
Very good.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, I mean, there are two options, or two ways we can make a dent on capital. Certainly, we can go in bond, a hundred thousand dollars, we'll support about a million dollar bond for one year, that's the usual rule of thumb we use, is a one to ten. I am arguing that we should prioritize hitting, spending towards the operating budget. There were two goals, as I mentioned, there was the debt goal, and there was the spending goal. I am advocating that we go ahead and hit the operating goal first, because that way it regenerates every year. I'm still in favor of bonding money, I just haven't seen it, so I'm coming at this from all angles. I had made out a list of all my efforts over the last five years against roads and sidewalks, the bond is just one of them. We proposed other ideas, as recently as two weeks ago, suggested that the city have in-house paving, that doesn't seem to be moving in any direction. I need to go back to my ward and show something for the efforts. If there is a desire to bring in a bond order tomorrow and bond for roads, I will support that too. But so far, that doesn't appear to be on the horizon. So I'm not sure what else one can do to try and show that we want to move forward on roads and sidewalks. It's again an election year, so we'll talk about roads and sidewalks ad nauseam, but I don't know how else to move forward. The bonding authorization for the roads and sidewalks, I think, has been in place for almost three years now. And it hasn't shown up anywhere in the CIP as far as bonding goes. And we continue to spin our wheels, and roads continue to deteriorate.
Further discussion, Counselor Condon?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I was wondering if Ethan is there, if he could just answer a couple of questions I had. One is, you know, by cutting this one hundred thousand dollars from the long-term debt principal, which again, I appreciate the question from the other at-large Counselor, because it does sound like we're arguing against borrowing money. So I just want to know how this would impact the capital improvement plan that we kind of went through, and we're able to identify the targets and the goals, since a lot of things were addressed there as well. So I don't know if I could, Ethan is there in person, but can he answer the impact, and how does that meet, kind of like the projections in the type of projects we were hoping to cover through our, the rough prioritization through the CIP process?
Sure, thank you, Counselor. So this cut would basically allow us to pay the service on what we have on the books, and would really leave no additional capacity if we had to pay any principal or interest during FY twenty-two. I think building the budget, we're looking for a bit of flexibility in that line item, if we're able to go to borrow, you know, for, whether it was for Fire Station Two on Story Ave, whether it was Phillips Drive, whether it was roads and sidewalks, or, you know, the bulkhead, a long list of needs that appear in the plan. I think rates are very favorable right now, which, you know, going out to borrow in the fall would definitely be a possible, you know, thing for the city to look at. This would definitely prevent us, you know, from doing anything like that. And then when we do take on the debt to fund these large projects going forward, we're just facing that much of a mountain to climb up when that time comes. So we're really looking at more of a gradual increase in debt service to bring it on, you know, over a number of years, rather than, you know, having a one million dollar hit in one year. So that was kind of the strategy in building this particular budget.
I just want to ask a question of Director Mann while he's here. So if I understood that answer correctly, by taking away this hundred thousand dollars, which would bring it down to four-forty, we wouldn't be able to bond in a way that we would want to? Is this a change in our position? Because for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, it was four-eight-five-hundred, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, it was, it was four-hundred-and-forty thousand. And then year-to-date, we've spent four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, and if I'm correct, this is the most updated spreadsheet that you sent around July first, at the beginning of the next fiscal year, right? So we're pretty much done with that, we didn't even spend all the money that we had last year, you know, for two thousand and twenty-one. So this cut would bring us back in line with the way we were for the last three years, or you're saying the last three years, we weren't doing it correctly?
Uh, so new debt has come on, so the total debt service for the general fund, non-exempt, is eight-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars, which this cut, I think, will bring it down to a little bit above that, which is good, because it'll allow us to pay our short-term notes that we have out there as well. So that's correct, it'll allow us to pay exactly, you know, what we've had issued, including any short-term notes.
The increase?
No, the increase, the proposed increase would allow for, allow the city to bring on new debt.
So if we don't do this increase, we won't have, we won't have the ability to do additional debt?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Well, I just wanted to add a little bit to what we discovered. First is, yes, in our workshops, we discovered this is for new debt. And the other thing we discovered is that it was a bit of a challenge to break down between principal and interest. So this is a hundred together, which is how we come up with a million dollars potentially of new debt. The interesting thing about the Finance Director's comments, and the at-large Counselor's question, which is a valid question, is that what you heard about were big projects. You heard about Fire Station Two, you heard about other things. I'm still after the roads and sidewalks. I came into this meeting tonight saying that this is really the one, this and the capital stabilization, this is my stand, this is the thing I want more than anything. I don't understand how we can keep doing the same thing year over year. Let me give you a little bit of a, sort of a more global view on roads and sidewalks. We have another line in the DPS that's gone up by about fifty grand. It's nominal in terms of increasing on the sidewalks. We do have a CIP transfer for six-hundred thousand dollars, which effectively is two years' worth of free cash. It was a nice boon for us, of course, we paid for it last year because of COVID, we really didn't do anything new. And we're just now seeing the list of roads that it's going to do. It's just not enough, it's not enough. So again, there's no, there is no proposal on the floor here to issue this million dollars for roads and sidewalks, which I would be more than happy to support, and that would go on the books, and with a million dollars, we can do what a million dollars buys us. I understand people lament how expensive paving is, I mean, I think we can lament how expensive everything is, but it is what it is, so we're either going to sort of bite it off and try and do it. I would really like for my ward, if you want a list of streets, I'm happy to provide them to you, but I think at minimum, we need to be moving towards two to three streets per ward per year in order to dig out of the hole. And, you know, I believe, again, in my cursory review of beta, that you're going to find that that's the same to make an upward trend. So really, the question you have before you here is, you've got a request increased by a hundred thousand dollars, equating to a million dollars of debt, but you have no idea what the administration wants to bond for. And the things that we have in the CIP are really larger things, Fire Station Two, et cetera. And when asked specifically about Phillips Drive in the Workshop Seven, this was stated that this really wasn't about Phillips Drive, and as we all know, Phillips Drive is more than a million dollars. So I'm asking you, if you don't like this idea, and you don't like my next idea, how are we going to make headway on roads? Just tell me how we're going to do it, tell me how I can go to my ward, and go to my residents, knock on their door, and say, hey, we've really made an effort here, you are going to see more paving, your street may still not get done this year or next, but we're going to do more.
I see both the Mayor, and Chief of Staff, Mayor, and that's all of the council?
I just want, I understand your frustration, but, and we agreed to bond that money, and we still plan on doing it, but we had a pandemic. There was only so many resources that we could bring to do any work in the city last year. We still had sacred to school, which also was a two-point-five-million-dollar project. So we met the two-million-dollar goal in terms of the work we did, and I understand your frustration that that's not enough. we did, and I understand your frustration that that's not enough. So now we're at a point where we can move forward. The beta plan, I know, has been horribly delayed, and I'm sorry about that. A pandemic has thrown everything up in the air. So here we are. We have the plan ready to go, and we're ready to bond on roads and sidewalks. So please don't cut this money. We need it to do roads and sidewalks, and it will go towards roads and sidewalks. And we can have a much deeper discussion when we do a ward meeting with you as we look at the beta plan for Ward 1 sidewalks.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. President. Counselor?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on the, I don't support the amendment. I do hear the Ward 1 Counselor's frustration as he's expressed it. And you also just heard from the mayor, there is an acknowledgement of deferred spending on streets and sidewalks. It's true that we don't have a bond order in front of us at this time. But I'm going to vote against this amendment because I want, I do want to borrow money. I do want to borrow money. And it goes together with what I'm going to do on the next amendment, which is, I don't want to send money away to stabilization, because as I said in the workshop, now is the time to spend. I want to spend the money now. So to be consistent, personally, I'm not going to support the cut. I want to, I want, I do want to tie up money in debt service so we can deal with our backlog.
Yeah, I don't support the amendment. And let me tell you, I have some additional information. The MMA Fiscal Policy Committee met this morning. We got a review. The current state budget is conservatively going to come in about $4 billion over what was anticipated. You can anticipate a supplemental budget coming out in the fall, and the governor has indicated, and MMA is pushing very hard. Discussion this morning. We've been arguing that the Chapter 90 funds go from 200,000 to, 200 million to 300, and that seems a certainty. We're going to push for more out of this supplemental budget. And so I think, I think the answer to your ward is in fiscal year '22, we could have a fifth, if it's distributed the way it usually is, we could have a 50% increase in state funds, which would come to about $750,000. So that's one thing. And also, the governor has indicated that he has plans appropriate for half of the ARPA funds. Those are going to go for sewer and water, as well as, interestingly enough, some dam work and culvert and bridge work, and also for protecting water supplies. And that's, that, you know, the numbers he's throwing around there is about 400 million for water and sewer. If that is distributed to us, all right, that's about, you know, we receive about a million dollars, all right, for water and sewer. So with that additional money, with paving money, with perhaps 100 million that we can borrow, and with fiscal '22 year money coming in, I think we can make a dent on not only paving, but also doing what we need to do underneath the roads so that we're not digging these up a year or two after they're paved. So I'm kind of more optimistic about this next year, especially from the road state. Although, I certainly would acknowledge that that's not money in our pocket right now, but I think we can anticipate that we're going to get, and I think it's good to do.
I actually was going to save this for the next discussion, the cut that I would make if Counsel Z did not make it, or if he was doing it. But we could have a drinking game where we all got really, really drunk on how many residents have emailed us in who think that their road is the oldest road in Newburyport that hasn't been done. I mean, it's numbering in the six years that I've been on the council, and repeat people, you know, so that I know their roads haven't been done. 50, 60, I mean, everybody thinks their road is the only road, the oldest road that hasn't been redone in Newburyport. This is a big problem. When we were first talking about beta, we were talking $3, $4 million, and we were all up in the auditorium before the pandemic. That even just to kind of get ahead of the maintenance that we had to do, we needed a significant investment of money. My Counsel Z, myself, and I have been sponsored the road bond bill that did, someone got watered down and diluted and hasn't been used since. But I think the other drinking game we could have is all the times that I've heard when somebody has said to me, "We need our roads and sidewalks done. What the heck is going on?" The answer has always been, "The state money is, you know, too little, and the state is not doing its job." So forgive me for, you know, not believing in this lobbying power of the MMA, but they've been working on this issue for a number of years, and they haven't gotten it done yet. It's a lobbying group, and, you know, if I were paying into that lobbying group, I would not, I would be disappointed with the results so far. So I do have a question for Director Manning again, though. So are you saying that if we don't add this $100,000, we can't, there's no other source? So the last three years, we haven't bonded, number one, if, because we're at the same, you know, we're actually at a lesser amount in this fund. But the second, in this line item, the second question is, don't we get somewhere between $2 and $3 million of free cash, which should be certified some time in the next couple of months, that would provide extra funds that could be earmarked for bonding if we didn't agree to this tonight? That way, we could have the debate not only about the bond itself, that one was presented to us, but we could have a debate before that and a discussion about, you know, where maybe we shouldn't put funding funds. This kind of locks us in.
Yeah, I mean, free cash is available for any legal expenditure. So of course, you know, the mayor and city council could approve it for, you know, whatever he wanted to spend it on. You know, whether or not, you know, cutting, cutting it down to precisely what we need to pay in debt service will really give us, you know, no flexibility in terms of issuing or paying any additional debt service in FY '22 year. So that would be my only hesitation, you know?
Out of this line item?
Correct.
My last one, and I just want to remind councilors and the public that there is no reason to bring a bond order for this. The bond authorization has been, it's been done. The council has authorized spending, bonding. If you have 100, if this cut fails, which it may, the mayor can issue a bond tomorrow, again, using the rule of thumb, of about a million dollars, and spend it on roads. So there isn't going to be some big ticker-tape parade here where we're going to have another bond order come in, and we've done that on many occasions, those of us who live through the garage and so forth. The credit line exists. It's been extended. So I'm going to follow through with the cut because I started it, but I'm also going to note on the record, the mayor said that we are going to bond, and I really look forward to that, and I think the residents of Ward 1 would as well. And on the other line.
First, a point of clarification. The governor's office indicated a desire for, you know, in the supplemental budget, to put an additional 100 million into Chapter 90 funds, right? So it's not just a lobbying in the MMA. Actually, the MMA is going for more than 100 million, not just the money. So just to be clear on this, if someone from the administration can answer the question, is it the intent to hit that $2 million target for fiscal year '22?
Yes.
Is it possible? And again, in committee, we had a discussion. There are two issues. One is a lack of money, all right, and $2 million for some money. We might even have more if anyone happens, all right? And secondly, it's, the issue is to what can be done, all right, because of, you know, this capacity issue that we heard from DPS about, all right? So is there willingness to go beyond that, if funds are available, for instance, you said? Or is there, is there a problem with capacity that we're running into?
I can answer that. I think that for this, for this calendar year, we may have capacity issues, just being where we are, where we are in the summer.
Calendar.
Yeah, but I think that would be something we could discuss for the next, for the next paving season.
Anything further? Call for the call?
We'll leave it to you.
Okay. So, since we're kind of working it, that's fine. So roll call on the amendment?
The roll call is cut $100,000 from 5911. Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Connell?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Counselor Tanta?
No.
Counselor Bogdan?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
No.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Argon? No. Motion failed. Okay. 92, motion failed.
All right, we are still on page 257. Now we're into 010 budgeted transfer out, transfer to cap stabilization fund.
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Motion, motion to cut it in its entirety to zero.
Okay.
Discussion?
Yeah, if I may?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Again, I'm interested in spending the money now. It's not that you would take the $348,000 to spend it dollar for dollar on sidewalks. That would be absurd. The idea is to leverage the money by borrowing. I think it's, it is good news that perhaps the calorie is coming and the state is going to pump in some money, or the federal government through ARPA or whatever. Okay, but we have such a large backlog that I just, there is no reason to wait. I mean, we've got so much deferred capital investment. Why would we defer our deferred capital investment if it doesn't make any sense? So unlike the Health Stabilization Fund and others, we're not waiting for a rate day. Now is the time. And as far as capacity goes, you heard from the Chief of Staff, yes, it's probably too late to contract to do work before the snow falls. Okay, I can see that. But you can't tell me that we can't find a way to increase our spending and then, you know, by the end of this next fiscal year. We just don't, I don't buy that for a minute. So I hope that you will support this cut so that the money can fall to free cash, and we have more flexibility to deal with our backlog. Thank you.
Other councilors?
Yeah, I can't support cutting this, and I'm going to go back to two years ago because I argued on the money when the proposal came in for $2 million per year for five years. I argued against it, and I argued against borrowing $2 million per year, and I argued for its decrease. The reason I argued against it, remember, this was two years ago, is that I didn't like where we were in the business cycle. We're in the 11th year of an economic recovery, the longest recovery in the history of the United States, and I was concerned that a downturn would occur. So if you had a downturn, and you went out there and you borrowed that $2 million, and $4 million, and $6 million, and $8 million, and a total of $10 million, all right, what would happen is, if we had that downturn, if revenues fell and we were committed to borrowing that, that money in that amount, all right, then we're, then we're closing down the West End Fire Station, all right, or we're laying on Peters, or we're cutting employees in the city, and therefore, we have cutting services. However, if there had been a capital stabilization fund, I would have supported it, all right, because that way, we could weather the rough waters. So I support keeping this in the stabilization fund, all right, because it gives us the capacity to actually be more secure in borrowing in the future, right? And so I would give a vote no on this amendment.
Counselor Z?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the arguments here are actually a little bit different. So the cap stability than the previous argument. Previous argument was, let's get the money out and spend it. There's some similarities here. But the cap stabilization fund is different. You're literally taking money out of the operating budget and putting it into a stabilization fund, and you'll never, you may never see it again. I'd like to ask and then continue through the Finance Director, what is the budget of the cap, what is the current balance, pardon me, of the cap stabilization fund?
The balance is approximately $218,000.
$218,000. And we're going to, and it's been sitting there for a little while, and we're going to add 350 to it. And again, what does the future look like? When are we going to get to spend the money? So now, it wasn't good to bond two years ago. Then we had COVID. It's not good to bond. Now we're getting out of COVID, and maybe the state's coming. It's still not a good time to bond. This is the similarity, is that it's the same theme, is that we seem to be, roads and sidewalks are important, but not important enough to actually ever do anything about them. So it's a mystery to me how and when they become important enough and they bubble enough. To me, this is actually a much easier vote than the last one. You put it into the stabilization fund, great. On a piece of paper, we say we have $550,000 in a state stabilization fund. The question is now what, and when? So I think this would be a real mistake to just put this into a one-time fund, maybe to never see it again, or not to see it again for a long time. Again, I'm looking for a plan to deal with deferred. I'm a little bit surprised to hear questions about capacity, as well as to hear questions about the state. Let me give you some numbers there. Our current allocation from Chapter 90 is about 520 grand a year. It's been that way for probably as long as I've been alive, or a very long time, we put it to you that way. Even if they went up by 50%, and we got 750, those of us who have been on the council now and have learned how much it costs to do a street realize that 250 still isn't going to get anywhere in terms of where we want to go. If we want to do roads and sidewalks, we have to start looking intrinsically. We have to start looking to ourselves. Even if the state comes in big time for the next two years, they will almost assuredly fall off once the ARPA money dries up. And then what? We're back to letting the capital, we're back to letting the streets continue to degrade. If somebody has a better idea, I'm all ears. As far as addressing capacity issues, I personally believe we need operational change. We need more internal capacity to do roads in-house. I brought that up. Maybe it will catch, you know, catch some wind in its sails at some point, but I think we're far away from having capacity issues. I think our number one problem is spending. And every turn we get, every chance we get, we seem to look the other way and say, "Nope, it's not a good time. This isn't a good source," and a litany of other excuses.
Counselor Clowdon?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. I'm just going to ask if we can ask the Counselor to speak toward the owl, because signals break up when you talk off axis. It's very difficult to hear the debate if you're speaking directly to the chair and not at the owl. I mean, no disrespect to the chair, but I do think in all fairness, those who are participating from a remote location are having a hard time following some of the debate. Thank you.
Of course, it's habit. Sorry.
And it looks like he's been carrying on a conversation with you all. So I would say, in addition, you know, the Finance Director just told us that Rachel Reed is right now, and this coming fall is a good time to borrow money, yet we're only going to put $100,000 out of the way to borrow up to $1 million. And again, we're all going to lean on beta, and then we just got the report today, but we all spent a significant amount of time with them up in the auditorium, and we all asked them a lot of questions. We asked them a lot of good questions. And the, you know, what we're coming up with is $3, $4 million a year to get ahead, not just to maintain, to get ahead. And we need to get ahead because we need to get on top of it. That question was asked by me specifically, and it was, it's $3 or $4 million to get ahead. So what we have right now in the capital stabilization, stabilization fund, easy for me to say, is $200,000 plus $345,000. That's 500, roughly $550,000. By, by the logic that's been discussed here so far, that's another $5 million in bonding. I am not suggesting that we bond at all, but there is money here, $300,000 of bonding. It is interesting. I do remember that debate. What our idea was for the road bond was, we had been hearing from that the state was not doing its job every time this was brought up. And so we said, the city has to, we, yeah, that's, that's not an excuse. The residents want to hear it from us anymore. They want us to figure it out. And so we've come up with some of the plans. Counselor Argon and I, many years ago, sponsored a ordinance that made the sidewalks, if you did a redevelopment over a certain amount, made the sidewalks have to be, you had to redo the sidewalks. All these little things count. So that's why I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Counselor Clowdon?
So if you take this 350, that's a portion, you know, roughly $3.5 million actually in all interest rate, probably. And so, and so we have enough to pay principal and interest in fiscal year '22 if we borrow money, all right? What's the proposal for getting the $350,000 for the next 19 years? Because that's what you're going to be doing, right? You're taking this, this windfall, which we got because the insurance, you know, provided us with approximately $10,000, somewhere in that, because they, we got calendar year, fiscal year '21, fiscal year '22 holidays, one month in each year, so we didn't have to pay. That's where these funds came from. Going forward, where do you get the money to pay off this $3.5, $4 million you want to borrow?
I'm going to let that, go ahead, yeah.
Sure, I just, I just want-
Sure, I just, I just want to go back to the reasoning of why we're proposing this, this line item budget. And we had our capital improvement process. We had, we, oh, we didn't sit here. We were on Zoom. How nice it is that we're actually sitting here and discussing, well, I'm listening to you discuss it. But what we heard in the CIP is that there's lots of multimillion dollar projects coming down the pipe. They're just lurking. We're getting closer and closer. We're developing, we're developing those projects. Many of you sit on those committees that were working together to develop those plans. They're lurking. They're there. They're, they're approaching. We've been working towards them. Roads, roads and sidewalks is one of them. Roads and sidewalks is roughly six million dollars, but we also have the bulkhead. We also have the science wing, you know, whatever tech. We also have the fire stations. We've released one fire station, several others. So you're looking at, you know, almost twenty million dollars of bonding capacity that we would need in the next couple of years, maybe five years, maybe three years, maybe seven years. But I think we all sat there or sat in our homes and while we're on Zoom and all had a little bit of heartbreak, how are we even doing that? How are we going to fund that? And that was the conversation at that, during that process. I think what we, what we decided to do is increase the principal. We talked, you, the counselor just debated that, but also create, also add to our capital stabilization fund. Because three hundred thousand dollars, yes, you could probably do, you could probably pay one road right now or it could probably, but we need many roads to be paved. And we also have those other multimillion dollar projects that there's no way three hundred thousand dollars is going to put a dent into a multimillion dollar project. So the idea was to start, you know, to contribute to the stabilization fund that we know that the multimillion dollar bonding asks that we're going to this council or the next council within a year or so. Those are going to have to be funded. We're going to have to pay that debt. We're going to have to pay those interest rates. And we don't want to come to the council next year, say fiscal twenty-three or fiscal twenty-four, and we see a forty, fifty, hundred, three hundred percent increase in this line item because that has an effect on the other services we provide in our operating budget. So the idea is that we, we put that into a stabilization fund with the idea that when we, when we go out to bond and when we do these bonding things, it won't be a dramatic jump in our operating budget. And we'll be able to soften that because we'll be able to draw from this account. So that's the reason why we have it. The reason to put the stabilization fund in is to be, is that the city can afford in the future, in the near future, bonding for roads and sidewalks, but also all the, roads and sidewalks are just a small portion of all the other items that the city is looking to bond in the next few years. Thank you.
Counselor Con.
Yes, thank you, Congressman. Counselor, I have a hard time saying that, I'm sorry, but I think, I just wanted to, to say that, you know, sitting again through the CIP and I think we heard from Chief of Staff Pugin on this, is that, you know, on page thirty-eight of our budget books, we kind of talked about some of the budget items and some of those large, kind of large increases that we're seeing in terms of allocations, the big portion on, on the capital stabilization fund and trying to come to some type of a, I really like it, like a target, you know, a target policy to plan and put money aside for the capital improvement plan that we all spent a lot of time on. And that is a little bit of where I, my, my head is around those projects, you know. We saw a lot of critical projects and I am fully not going to support this zeroed out. I, I do think that, you know, I hear the conversation and interest in addressing a lot of the immediate kind of areas that a lot of us feel might need to be prioritized. And it sounds like that we aren't getting there, especially with the beta plan. But more specifically, I think it comes down to, you know, understanding paving, you know, paving streets or the amount that takes to be sidewalks is a large amount of money, you know. I was always surprised when I hear from VPS on how much that costs. And so, you know, setting aside, well, whether it's a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand, it's surprising how, how my linear fee actually gets kind of paid during that process. So I understand that that is an interesting, we're talking about going to bond on that, which I'm very excited to hear. But in terms of getting to it with these, this kind of a cut without looking at the vision of the CIP and where we're hoping to get to, I just don't support that. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes. Go ahead, Counselor Agnew.
Yes. First of all, I, I anticipated or I tried to anticipate the comments by Chief of Staff Pugin where he misrepresented what I was saying of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, it's not dollar for dollar. No one is arguing we take the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and write a check to a contractor. The idea is that we give us more flexibility for the multiplier effect to take on debt. So again, that's just not what being proposed. Counselor Tantar's comment, I think what he's misunderstanding is he keeps saying, you know, we're waiting for a rainy day, we need to wait for our rainy day. And so we need to squirrel money away. What I'm saying, why I'm proposing this cut is we are already behind. This is the rainy day. We've put off for so many decades investing in capital. I'm talking about, you know, things that are sort of fine and dire. New projects. This is our CIP, just taking care of what we have. That now is the time to spend the money despite my own. And I, you know, essentially, the administration is proposing it. They don't want to spend the money now. That's what it's about. It's not that they don't want to spend the money. They're putting it into a reserve account, essentially. They're calling it a stabilization account, but they're saying, we don't want to spend it right now. We want to do it later. And I'm saying, there is no waiting. Now is the time. We're, we're, we heard from the finance director that interest rates are in the right place. The city is healthy financially. We just got through the COVID crisis and yet revenues are up, you know. So now is the time. And, and, you know, we've been waiting and waiting and waiting. And I'm tired of waiting, so I'd like to make the investment now. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to say I won't be supporting this because I think that, I appreciate all the debate. But I think that we need some flexibility in how we apply this. I think that at any time, we can do a transfer of monies in if we find we have more than we have. And I think that at this point, you know, I appreciate the fact that we have three hundred and forty-eight in a, in a fund, but the reality is that it counts as zero for us to actually spend that money. It's a savings account. And we have a consistent theme here and the theme has been through the budget process is we have a lot of extra money in, in our budgets and we need to pull that out and we need to consolidate it and we need to spend it. You know, I'm not going to harp on the roads and sidewalks because I've been harping on the roads and sidewalks. But the reality is that we need more of these funds consolidated. Free cash is a great spot to do it. It allows us to do some planning. I think over time, we can build a consistent plan to fund the stabilization program. I just don't think taking a, a windfall like this and moving it off is the appropriate time for us to do it when we're trying to spend, spend down some of this extra money in the budget. Thank you.
I didn't know where to begin. Who's next? Go ahead.
And I, I will talk to the owl or try my best, which is not as, I don't know, how are you looking at that?
That was, that was good looking.
Agreed. So I just wanted to respond to the at-large counselor's question, which is, yes, we learned that the source of this fund is a one-time COVID holiday vacation from insurance. So how do you fund the other nineteen years? Well, not to bring up old arguments and debates, although it's good to be back in person and maybe you reminisce a little bit, but as a longtime supporter of a capital line in the budget, that's how you do it. You make it a priority. And I heard the Ward five counselor say there's extra money in the budget and I saw some cringing around. But remember, every year I've been on the council, we've generated about a million and a half to two million dollars of free cash. So there is extra money in this budget. Typically, it's about fifty-fifty. Seven hundred and fifty of it comes from unspent or underspent lines and the other seven fifty comes from better, better than expected revenues. So the answer to your question is, okay, how do you fund it? Well, the answer number one is you make it a priority. Next year, you find three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to spend it on capital or to fund debt if that's what other counselors want. I'm a bit of a different mind, but I think that's a side argument, so I'm not going to get into it. The second answer is you have free cash. That's basically how we fund capital now. It's extremely bumpy. You never know what it's going to be. And the last piece is just to the airing of the grievances, it's amazing to sit in this meeting here, the desire essentially for a debt plan, which we've been asking for forever because the numbers don't pencil. Those who are on budget finance and otherwise will recall, I put together a pro forma for you and I showed you that it doesn't work. So the only way you're going to make headway on things you care about is by picking and choosing. And you're right, it is difficult. Sometimes you have to let other things go. I cannot go to another neighborhood meeting, get another petition for my ward about another street. I have to do better. This is one way to do it. This is a faster way to do it. You put it in the cap stabilization fund. You tell me when we'll see it again. Thank you.
Anybody who hasn't spoken? Counselor Wallace.
I would just like to say that I will be supporting this cut one hundred percent. Streets, sidewalks, safety, even that amount of money could go a long way. And there's actually a petition in Ward four coming in and it's over and over again. So every little amount counts and we have to spend it now. Thank you.
Counselor Con, you're still up.
Yes, just one last question, I think for director manning stabilization funds. And I cannot remember this, maybe I might be training this up, but I can't remember if we were, what our, I think we talked about our rule of thumb in terms of the targets. Did that have anything to do, and I could be wrong, did that have anything to do to increase our, the perception of our borrowing? Or was there anything, and I cannot, again, I cannot remember this. So can you speak to anything in terms of the benefits and the best practice from a policy perspective of keeping that stabilization, stabilization fund at certain targets? Just a question on that. Thank you.
Sure. I'd be happy to address that. Yeah, so as, as far as the ratings agencies are concerned, they, they love reserves no matter what we call it. But in terms of what, what Counselor Con was referring to, that's more of the stabilization trust fund where we target to keep a balance equal to five percent of the annual general fund net revenue. This particular carve-out, and I just mentioned that the reason that we showed the transfer to the capital stabilization fund within this debt service category is that we want to spend it on debt service. And putting it in this capital stabilization ensures that it's held aside so that when the time comes to pay the debt service, it might be FY twenty-two, it might be FY twenty-three, it's there, we can appropriate it, we'll be good to go. I think looking at page eleven in the, in the capital improvement program, we kind of show, we looked out five years to show what our debt service line item would need to be to fund all of the projects in the capital improvement plan. It needs to get close to two million dollars. Currently, our debt service is eight hundred and forty thousand. That, that's a, that's a big increase. So by having this capital stabilization fund out there, it really is a, is a tool to help pay for debt service, you know, to fund the plan over the next two to three years.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Shan.
So I am not going to be supporting this. We have been talking about the CIP plan for years now and finding a way to support it. And this is the way to do that. So I will not be supporting this amendment.
Saying no further discussion? Mr. Clerk, roll call on five-nine-six-six-three, cut the line item to zero. Counselor Con.
No.
Counselor Lane, yes. Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
No.
Counselor Shan.
No.
Counselor Tantar.
No.
Counselor Bogdan.
No.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Six yes, five no, motion passes. Counselor Z, what's next? Sorry. Counselor Agnew.
Yes.
And Counselor Tantar.
No.
You get another vote.
I get two votes. I get two votes.
So it's still six-five, correct?
Yes.
I'm reading mine.
All right, counselors, that concludes workshop one. We're on to workshop two, which is education, which is page two forty-five. The first group that we have is again, page two forty-five, Newbury Court, Public Schools, zero-zero-two, purchase of services. Counselor McCauley.
I'd like to make a motion for five-three-two-oh-one to reduce the proposed from thirty-three-four-eighty-five-four-sixty-six to thirty-three-one-eighty-five-four-sixty-six, reduction of three hundred thousand.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
All right, Counselor McCauley, you want to speak to it?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. So as folks are probably asking, why would I make such a dramatic motion? On the surface, it looks like a cut, but in reality, it's consistent with our theme here, which is when is enough cushion enough? This administration has pledged to support the schools and they have, they have throughout their term. And my fellow counselors want to spend more on the schools. They've made that abundantly clear. But there's a bit of reality that kicks in a little bit. In two thousand and nineteen, we funded one hundred and three point nine percent of the need and the schools spent one hundred percent. Two thousand and twenty, we spent, we funded a hundred and four percent. They spent a hundred percent. In twenty-one, a hundred and four percent. They spent a hundred percent. In twenty-two, they, we proposed a hundred and four percent and they'll probably commit at a hundred percent. And spent is not projected to spend, but actually spent on that money. Schools are an inefficient utilization of capital. You can't spend more to get more at schools. If so, Lawrence and Chelsea would have the best schools in the country. Schools are a people factory. They're teachers. The teachers produce educated kids. And unless you have more kids, which we don't, they can't be, this can't be optimized. We just spent the last eighteen months proving that you cannot industrialize learning. So yes, this is about the growing balance in school choice. I'll admit, I've made no points about that. It is money from other communities targeted to defray costs in the whole school. We know that. We've got rulings on that. We've cleared away all the misconceptions and that's what it is. And our school department has been very adept at managing these funds. In two thousand and eleven, the balance was one point seven million. Two thousand and twenty-one, after a pandemic year, it was one point seven-seven million. It's actually closer to eighteen point three million. We're always planning for the disaster that's just over the hill. And I'll summarize it this. I think this is a good year for the school department to be fair and equitable to our taxpayers, spending some of their resources. In the gambling world, this would be considered house money. And you always spend house money before you ask taxpayers for more. And the only way that we're going to suggest to them to spend more of their money is to maybe withhold back some of our money. I hope you'll consider this amendment. Thank you.
Counselors, others? Counselor Shan.
There are seven elected people in this community that are on our school committee and they gave us a budget that we all listened to and agree with to the best part. And I can't imagine cutting anything from our schools at this point in time. So I will not be supporting this.
Others who wish to speak? Counselor Agnew?
Yes, I'll be booing against this. I, I'm okay with, under the circumstances, with their school department retaining a balance in their revolving fund. But I want to defend the right of a counselor to question the practice. We have any department that's carrying a surplus in a revolving fund, and this is a revolving fund. We usually ask them to spend it rather than pour the money. And so the motivations of, of the sponsoring counselor are pure. And I don't think it's any disrespect to the school committee for him to raise this. We're not a rubber stamp. This is the city council. Just as they do their job, we have to do our job. He has a right to raise this issue. So I'm very disappointed with the tenor of some of the comments made making it into really a personal attack on Counselor McCauley. I don't think that's appropriate. Again, I'm not going to support this cut, but I do defend the right my colleague suggested.
Counselor Con.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I also will not be supporting this.
I also will not be supporting this. But I have to say, being counselor from Ward Five, his questions and conversation has, if anything, has educated me a lot on choice funding. And this is something that I think I appreciate about the body of people here, and asking questions and finding out more, because transparency is what we owe the residents. And if anything, this dialogue has, to me at least, provided a little bit more transparency on certain line items that do not come before us. And if you see, schools is really just one line item. So while I do not support, I do think that this conversation has really actually educated many of us. But I will not be supporting this cut. Thank you.
Other councilor?
Sorry. I can't support this cut, but I do understand its genesis. I would say it was about four and a half years ago that I was on Joint Ed, and Council Zee came to our Joint Ed meeting and asked us about the choice funds. Not only did he say he was a little confused about where the money was going, but he also said, you have got to keep an eye on this because these are some essential funds, and your choice is dropping. He proved to be prescient on both accounts. And for a little bit of history as well, revolving accounts, there's probably five or six in the city right now. And those are accounts where there are monies that we do not have to see and prove the spending of that money first. And that's been problematic to me. That's been problematic to Council Zee and some others, Council Argon on the council, in that our job is to review all the spending that comes into this, that comes to us and is happened by the city. And so when there are holes in that, we feel we're not doing our job. I don't know if we owe it to the residents, but we certainly owe transparency to the residents. But we need transparency at the, I mean, we do owe transparency to the residents, if they come out of the right way. But we need transparency. What I think Council McCauley is getting at at one point was the same thing that Council Zee was getting at, later picked up by me at Joint Ed, is that we need to know how much it costs to run the city. And members of the school committee have talked to me about this themselves with some other funds that come into the school committee. They want to know the true cost of running the school committee, and we want to know the true cost of running the entire city government. I would offer a suggestion, just because we're here and I'm on Joint Ed, I can't discuss it with the two other members unless it's in a public hearing. But I would offer a suggestion. I was speaking to a school committee member, Hawkeizer, today, and they were just brainstorming on it. The financial committee does receive emergency transfers like we do. They receive transfers from one department to another department to fund unanticipated things in the budget. So the school committee's financial committee does get throughout the year the use of these funds when they need it for something. These funds are used for a little bit of a rainy day fund, but they are used, most of them, a lot of them. So what I was thinking is, on a monthly basis, we should get those through Joint Ed, and we could discuss them at Joint Ed. So by the time we got to the workshop next year, we would have this year's, or nine months of this year's spending from the school choice funds, from which we could base a projection for the next year and be better informed by this. However, I've worked too hard over the last five and a half years. My very first Joint Ed meeting, or the second one, I challenged the superintendent and the school committee at that time to think big. Give us an aspirational budget. The school committee talked a little bit about, some school committee members talked a little bit about their duty. Their duty is to not try to fit their budget into the overall city budget. For those of you who don't know, who are maybe watching at home, we had a joint budget meeting between the school committee and the city council. This is the kickoff to the budget process. And at that meeting, oftentimes, as it is the mayor's and the administration's obligation to do, they do have to fit everything in. And they have done a good job of that. They say we can allow, usually it's about, over the last 10 years, it's been about 3%. That frankly keeps up with the cost of living expenses in most of the contracts in our school committee. It doesn't, like roads, it doesn't allow for growth. And we want growth. Most of us want our schools to be the best schools in the state, not just in our area. We want them to be the best in our state. And this is no indictment of the people that work at our schools. They do a really, really good job. My point to the school committee was, and to the superintendent and the new superintendent was, come to us with a bigger budget. Let us argue about it on the bigger stage of city council budget night. And this year, the superintendent finally did it. Asked for a greater than what was allowed, or $120,000. I will take it. It's not as big as I wanted it to be, but I will take it. I wanted them to give us a number that I was kind of afraid of and would be put in an awkward position for arguing for. Because that's the responsibility ultimately of us, is it's a policy decision. How much do we value our schools, and how much do we want to spend on? So I can't support this. I understand where it's coming from, and I'm very, very appreciative of school committee member Sean Reardon, who took the lead in the last couple of years on this. School Vice Chair Brian Hattigan took a lot of grief from me. And then school committee member Hawkeizer. And then Superintendent Sean Gallow. Thank you very much for bringing in a bigger budget than was allowed.
Council Zee, first, Council McCauley?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I too will not be able to support the cut. It would be sort of, sorry, hypocritical and antithetical to what I've also worked on. And I think Council Devlin covered that pretty well. So I'm not going to rehash it. What I do want to talk about is where I do have concern and where I don't think the story on this ends tonight, even if the cut passes or the cut fails, in whichever direction it goes. And my main concern is comparing budgeted to actuals. Budgeted to actuals. Every year, we see the same kind of trend. This has been my experience. And I went back and I looked over the last many years, and the trend seems to be similar, which is that school choice funds are always placed into the budget to make it balanced. And today, in our emailing logs we receive, I think it was titled "Update to School Choice" or something like that, and as expected, and you could see that in the school budget too. You know, you see the city allocation, you see other sources of funds, and then you see the school choice line. And I believe this year, it's about 800 or so. And there was considerable debate on the school committee about drawing more funds out into that line. And that's great. And on paper, what it shows and what we received today is that at the end of the year, in theory, if the budget turns out, that we will end up with a fairly modest school choice balance of about $300,000, which I don't think anybody can logically argue against a $300,000 reserve against a $35 million budget. It would be silly. The problem is the actuals. What actually comes out at the end of the year is we never go down to 300. And that's a good thing. I'm not complaining about that. But I am saying that if you look at the 10-year history provided to us over the last five years, looking from '17 to '21, we've taken in approximately, round numbers, $1 million in choice funds, and we've spent 227. So I appreciate the Council from Ward Five's cut to spur the discussion. I'm not going to support it. But my point is that it's comparing budget to actuals, where I'm getting sucked as somebody who wants them to spend more money. And I think we will be talking about this in a year, and we'll see if we hit the 300. And I think if we do, then okay, we hit what was budgeted. And on the city side, we actually, we applaud that. We say, look, we hit the budget. So the point is that I don't think that's a good ratio to carry forward. And as the Ward Five council said, 10 years ago, the school choice budget was one, the school choice balance was 1.7. It's still 1.7. So you're netting to zero over a period of 10 years. So my goal actually, with all due respect, is to continue to spur more spending and to utilize these funds, consistent with some of my other arguments on some of the other things. But I wanted to explain what I believe we uncovered through our investigation and what matters. This is, I just want to wrap up with this. This is a policy question. It is not a legal question. It's not a question of what you can do. It's what you should do. And the question is, what should you do? And that's what the school committee does. They deliberate. It's what the superintendent's office does, and it is what the city council does too. And so I would echo the Council President's points that, yes, this is a discussion we can have here. So those are my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. I can't support this either. And you know, Ward Five Council and I reviewed the school budget, the school department, last fall in detail. We got all the answers that we had last year. I looked at the school, of course, looked at the choice budget and the history of choice. And I'm satisfied with it. I think I got down to around 800, but I think there were some missing pieces that came in in the latest update. And you know, the piece about the school committee and the role they play is that, I mean, they are elected by the people, right? And they are elected to concentrate. They work all year with the superintendent. And they develop a plan. And I think having that choice there to draw on, which is what happened this year, right? The reason, you know, schools were able to meet the priorities is they had that money from the choice fund to allocate, all right? And they did that, all right? So I, you know, I don't have an appetite for cutting that. And I don't have, as I don't have an appetite for cutting other stabilization-type funds throughout the city. I just think it puts us in a dangerous position.
Are we ready to vote? We have, Mr. President, I believe. This is a cut of $300,053,201. Councilor Khan?
No.
Councilor Lane?
No.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Councilor Connell?
No.
Councilor Shan?
No.
Councilor Tontar?
No.
Councilor Vogel?
No.
Councilor Wallace?
No.
Council Zee?
No.
Council?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Sorry for you saying that. That was a no, Council Zee. Council Devlin?
No.
Council Argon?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, Mr. President, we'll continue on. Page 245, where we remain. We're done with New Report Public Schools. We are now into Essex North Shore Tech, Purchase of Services. Not seeing any, and that takes us to Whittier Regional Technical High School, Purchase of Services. I don't see any, so we will continue on. We're now into Workshop Number Three, Council on Aging. So Workshop Three was Social Services. We're going to be on page 212. Pardon, 217 for the actual budget. Council on Aging, Personnel Services. Not seeing any, Purchase of Services. Again, not seeing any, and Supplies. I don't see any hands. That's going to take us on to the next department, which is New Report Public Libraries. So we're just going to continue to flip a few pages here. 227, Public Library, Personnel Services. Purchase of Services. I don't see any there. So then we're going to continue on to Youth Services, which is going to be on page 235. Again, editorial note, I'll remind you that this page has been revised as per our vote earlier on tonight. And the revised page was included. I believe that the two relevant changes, the two lines that were changed. 51164, Youth Administrative Assistant, changing from 8910 to 35640. And 51190, Youth Activities Coordinator, changing from 0 to 70. And although it wasn't provided, there's a change on page 22. Looking at, yeah, that shows the transfer in the same amount from the revolving fund for youth services.
That's correct.
So with that editorial note, we are on 001, which is Personnel Services. Council McCauley?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion on 51404, Travel Allowments. I'd like to strike the $1,200 increase.
The motion is to cut 51 to 404, the $1,200 increase. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Council McCauley, you want to speak to it?
Sure.
You know, this isn't protected by collective bargaining agreement or anything like that. In our budget workshops, when questioned, the answer was, no, not necessarily increase merit tariff or car, but because other department heads were getting more, they wanted more. So I, these travel allowances or car allowances, I think, quite frankly, I'm opposed to them just in general. I think this is, but I'll keep that. For this, I think going back to the original amount of 2100 consistently is more appropriate for the travel needs and requirements for this.
Other councilors wishing to speak? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah. I'd be happy to. The second was by whom?
Council Devlin?
Thank you. And we have, I have 51404, cut our $1,200 back to $2100.
Correct.
Councilor Khan?
Yes.
Councilor Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Councilor Connell?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
No.
Councilor Tontar?
No.
Councilor Vogel?
No.
Councilor Wallace?
Yes.
Council Zee?
Yes.
Council Devlin?
Yes.
Council Argon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, continuing on. That was the last line, Personnel. So any final calls on Personnel Services, Youth Services, page 235. Seeing none, we're going to Purchase of Services and Other Charges and Expenses. Okay, not seeing any. We're going to continue on to Veteran Services, which will take us to page 240 and 241. So we'll take them to, you know, separately, I'll go through each one. So Veteran Services, Non-Shared Expenses, page 240. Personnel Services. Purchase of Services. Other Charges and Expenses. Yes, Council Lane?
Who currently is the Veterans Graves Officer?
Ethan, do you know?
That would be the Veterans Director.
It's not a separate person?
No, it's not.
Anything else on Veterans Services, Non-Shared, page two forty? Not hearing any, we'll go on to the next page, Veteran Services, Shared Expenses. First category is Personnel Services. Next category is Purchase of Services. Other Charges and Expenses. And that concludes Veterans Services. And that concludes workshop number three, which was Social Services. And we move on to workshop number four, which is Public Safety. And we are going to start Public Safety with Emergency Management. Heading back in the book to page number ninety-three. Again, Emergency Management, page ninety-three. First category is Personnel Services. Looking for anybody, not seeing any. Next is Purchase of Services. Next is Supplies. And finally is Other Charges and Expenses. Not seeing any there, we will continue on. Next department is Fire Department. And we're on page number one hundred. First category, Fire Department, is Personnel Services. Not seeing any. Purchase of Services. Not seeing any there. And finally, we have Supplies. Not seeing any. And Other Charges and Expenses. Okay, Fire Department's all closed up. Next is Police Department. Continue flipping here. We're on page number one hundred and twelve. Police Department Personnel Services. Not seeing any Purchase of Services. Not seeing any Supplies. Nothing there. Other Charges and Expenses. And finally, we have Capital Outlay. None, okay? Moving on, next department is going to be Health. Sorry, I don't know why we didn't do Harvard next. See that order in the front and the difference. So we're going to jump to page one twenty-nine, and then we'll come back to Harvard Master later on. So Health Department, page one twenty-nine. Personnel Services. Purchase of Services. Supplies. Other Charges and Expenses. Not seeing any. That concludes Health. And so just flip the page to one thirty for Animal Control. Zero-zero-one Personnel Services. None Purchase of Services. None Supplies. Other Charges and Expenses. None. Next is Sustainability. We're going to continue on to page number one hundred and thirty-eight. Sustainability Personnel Services. Not seeing any Purchase of Services. Not seeing any. And Supplies. Not seeing any there. So that concludes Sustainability. Now we will rewind in the book here to Harvard Master Enterprise Fund, which is page number one hundred and twenty. Under one hundred and twenty, we have First Personnel Services. Not seeing any Purchase of Services. None Supplies. And then Other Charges and Expenses. Capital Outlay. Debt Service. Transfer, budgeted transfer out to Health Insurance Stabilization Fund. None. That's the end of Harvard Master. And that concludes Workshop Four, which was Public Safety. So we are now going to move on to Workshop Number Five, which was Public Services. And that's going to start us off with DPS on page one hundred and forty. One hundred and fifty, pardon me. Department of Public Services, Personnel Services. Not seeing any. Next, we have Purchase of Services. Counselors, I think? I'm sorry?
Would you speak on?
Yes, go ahead.
For purposes of discussion, motion to cut five-two-one-oh-one Highway Heat by twenty-five-hundred dollars.
We have a second. Second by Counselor Devlin. Counselor Iguan, do you want to speak to it?
Yes, I apologize I had to miss this workshop. But my understanding is that during the workshop, the increase in the heating budget had to do with Fifty-seventh Low Street. And the reason I would propose the cut is that we're going to be essentially evicted of Fifty-seventh Low Street. So we wouldn't need that expenditure anymore. Perhaps Ethan or DPS staff could explain?
We don't have any DPS staff here, but there may be some in the attendees.
We, there is, I think Tony's is on.
Yeah, I see Tony.
Sure, I think I can take this one unless they have anything to add. Yes, this increase was for Fifty-seventh Low Street. So we imagine there will be some costs where we still are utilizing the building. But yes, the increase was to pay for the heat in that building.
Other counselors wishing to speak on this cut?
Well, may I follow up?
Yes.
So we're going to continue to use the building then? Because this is prospective spending. That's my view.
I guess I can answer in the near future. We are, we're planning on utilizing Fifty-seventh Low Street.
Other counselors? Counselor Iguan, are you all set? Do you want to follow up? Comments or questions?
Aye.
Other counselors? No, Counselor Lane?
I see you on the aisle.
So if it's a main heat and we stop using it, what happens to that money? Just a question.
It would go on the spend. And it would cost to break cash.
So we're going to use the note, right? This is, this is going to be, I mean, this is. Something that's a main is kind of a tough.
Well, as of June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, we are, is it included in the budget? That's the plan at this point.
Yeah, just to be clear, who?
Through all the chairs.
Through Jared as well, but so where you, we, our plans are to use that into the heating season, including the winter, Fifty-seventh Low Street.
We would like to.
Can we get it? Before we vote on doing, funding the heating for that, what is the likelihood that we will?
That's the information I have tonight.
Have we had conversations with the D-CAM that they've indicated that we will utilize it?
Not with D-CAM.
With anybody else?
Correct.
Who?
We have preliminary discussions with the Army National Guard. I don't have concrete. I know that they're willing to provide us a short-term accommodation, but their goal is to go forward with the sale of that property. But in the near term, we think we can utilize that property.
Other counselors? Counselor Tontar?
Is the intent to have the Parks Department continue to use that place? Because the reason I'm asking, why is this in the Highway Department's budget? They're not in the Parks Department's budget. If the answer is yes?
The answer is yes, the Parks Department will be utilizing it. I think it's traditionally been in this account. I think that's the reason why it's usually come to the council's account.
I just want to add one note. That's, that's not my understanding. Usually it was funded out of EMR, the Emergency Management, because they were the last occupants. Then we fell into nowhere, I guess, which is where we are now, because we don't have a lease and so forth. So that's when we asked about this, and that's when we got the answer, just informational on the workshop. Anybody else? Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, so I'm okay with both, right? I've decided about how I'm actually going to vote on it, because I don't want to vote for this money to indicate that I actually approve of the use of Fifty-seventh Low Street. And I want that abundantly clear to the administration that this is temporary. And until formal lease and paperwork and review is done, that I don't want my vote to be construed as approval for continued use of this long-term. So, thank you.
Anybody else? I don't see any hands. Roll call.
Says fifty-two-one-oh-one Highway Heat, is the cut twenty-five-hundred?
Yes, it is. Counselor Iguan, seconded by Counselor Devlin.
Got it. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Counselor Tontar?
No.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Iguan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, Mr. President, we continue on. We're still in Purchase of Services on DPS. And as I did with other departments, I'd like to mention here that this was a revised page, just to refresh your memory. Streetlights was cut, and the money that came from, this was from the administration, and we voted on earlier, was then split between traffic calming and sidewalks. So we have the amended version. Anything else in Purchase of Services for DPS? Not hearing any, we're on to Supplies. And finally, we're on to Capital Outlay. Okay, I don't see anything, so we're going to turn the page to page one fifty-two, Snow and Ice. Personnel Services, five-one-three-oh-one. On there. And then we have next is Purchase of Services. Anybody on Purchase of Services? No. Okay, we're done with DPS and Snow and Ice. Continue flipping your book, and we're going to go into Water Department. And that is going to take us to page one sixty-four, Water. This is Enterprise Fund. Personnel Services. None Purchase of Services. Supplies. Other Charges and Expenses. Capital Outlay. Debt Service. And budgeted transfer out to the Health Stabilization Fund. None. Sewer Department, Sewer Enterprise Fund. Please find yourselves on page one seventy-six, Personnel Services. Not seeing any Purchase of Services. None Supplies. Other Charges and Expenses. Capital Outlay. Debt Service. And Transfer to Health Insurance Stabilization Fund. None. Takes us through Workshop Five. We're now into Workshop Number Six, which is going to be Planning and Development Group. And we're going to start off with the Departments of Planning and Development. And that's going to take us to page one ninety-one. And we are going to start off with Personnel Services for Planning and Development. Not seeing any Purchase of Services. Supplies. None. Planning and Development complete. The next page is what we kind of put under Planning and Development. So License, I'm going to do this fast. Licensing Commission Personnel. Other Charges and Expenses. Conservation Personnel Services. Historical Commission Personnel Services. Planning Board Personnel Services. Zoning Board Personnel Services. Okay, not seeing any there. We will continue on. We are now headed into the Building Department, page one ninety-eight. Building Department Personnel Services. Purchase of Services. Supplies. Not seeing any there. We'll continue to the bottom here. Under Building Department Commission on Disabilities, we have Personnel Services is the only category there. There any questions or motions? None, okay? Moving on to the last department in this workshop, which is Parks. First grouping is Personnel Services. Anybody? May I make a motion, Mr. President? I'd like to make a motion on five-one-nine-oh-one to cut the downtown improvement labor from twenty-four to twelve.
Second.
And I'll speak to it, if that's all right?
Excuse me, sit for a second.
Yes.
You left me, you're on what?
Five-one-nine-oh-one, the last line in the group.
Okay.
From twenty-four to twelve, so the cut's twelve.
Thank you.
The reason I'm proposing this cut is something that's been nagging me for a little bit that I hear a lot. And that is the concept of downtown seems to get more attention than some of the other areas of the city. I suspect other counselors have heard this as well. And, you know, it just always struck me as odd that there's a specific line item here for downtown improvement labor. Now, during the workshop, we do understand that this is coming out of the parking fund. So it is being funded, and that's fair, and I think that's reasonable. What I'm concerned about is it's about time, it's not about money. So the problem is, if people are going to be spending time, it would be nice to get some of that time out to the neighborhood parks and some of the other parks. Just anecdotally speaking, you know, I often remark folks from parks spending a ton of time in the Green Street parking lot by way of example. I think other counselors do as well. And I would love to see similar level of attention paid to, for example, Joppa Park in my ward, or Perkins, or one of the many other parks in the city. And I'm, so I'm concerned about this line. And again, I appreciate that it's being funded from downtown, so that's not my line on it. I would also note for you, while we're not down into the other categories as well, that downtown improvement also receives its own supply line. And it just seems a little bit unfair to me, and I think it would be nice to favor, or at least treat downtown, which really is, you know, parking lots in large part, you know, at least on par with our neighborhood parks. That's the reason.
Any further discussion?
Counselor Khan and Counselor Iguan.
And Counselor Iguan, we both have our hands.
Oh, I'm glad you're there. Go ahead, Counselor Khan.
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. I see Lisa Reed's in the attendance, and I think it'd be beneficial for her to hear from her that what does downtown improvement labor and area entail, especially with the two-line items? So if that's okay with the Counsel President, I'd like to recognize this, and read.
Please. She needs to unmute. Did she have to unmute?
You can ask her to unmute. And she'll get a prompt. Here we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so the downtown, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so downtown until the industry and including the lot pass. It includes the Green Street parking lot, Unicorn Street, Patrick Treeby Square, and Nichols Park area, which is beside the Green Street parking lot, the Bull Nose Traffic Island, and and the elevated walkway that's part of the industry part.
Counselor Khan, did you want?
So are we? I'm sorry, I'm having so much trouble hearing you guys. So I mean, this budget for downtown is essential to our, mainly our seasonal park budgets. And if you cut that, we'll be late to lots who are hired seasonally for the summer and who do benefit of downtown.
Thank you, Counsel Khan. Did you want to follow up to your question?
No, I just, I think, well, actually, more just for all of this here. And I think, you know, I probably will not, I will not be supporting cutting this. And I'm looking historically on what was spent and recognizing that some of the labor efforts that were done, especially, and I think industry is the one I was trying to remember. Having previously been, you know, sitting at the council and hearing some of the efforts done, and as well as the labor and going through the whole seasonal labor, folks that are brought on and the amount of time that they need to spend, I feel like it is critical. I know, I recognize the need in other wards for the other parks, which are, I think, represented here as well. But I will not be supporting cutting this. And I do think it's beneficial for all of the community, for those folks who do go downtown and get to appreciate this and appreciate that it is tenured to. So, thank you.
I think Counsel Iguan was next, I think.
Yes, thank you. I'm torn on this. I mean, I, as the Ward Two Counselor, obviously, it's money spent at Ward Two. So in past years, I've gone along with it. And in fact, I was the sponsoring Counselor when we designated industry as a park. That was, I think, in my first term. The reason being, in order to secure a grant to repair the fountain, we had it designated as a park. And so we gave it to the Parks Commission jurisdiction. And I also saw the logic at Bull Nose, the Parks Department, because it was a continuous to industry. But I am troubled by park staff being used to spruce up parking lots or traffic islands. You know, that, I think, I think the sponsoring Counselor has a good point. And even in Ward Two, I'd rather have our staff, who are stairs, seasonal staff, something I don't want to spend the twenty-four thousand, but I'd rather have in the neighborhood parks. So I don't want that to go unnoticed. And especially since this is my last budget meeting, I still think that downtown is a special case. And we may want to consider having some sort of an improvement district down there, because there are such specialized needs. You have a source of funds already, which is the parking. But it does seem inequitable. And I've had complaints from Ward Two residents who live downtown decrying how much staff time, whether it's snow removal or planting flowers, we spend on downtown. And in fact, the amount of revenue that we derive from downtown is really something to school. In a good year, we may get six hundred thousand dollars in meals tax out of what a seventy-five million dollar annual budget. And then, of course, it's notorious, our residential real estate is tearing about eighty-nine. And then, of course, since notorious, our residential real estate is carrying about 89% of our revenue load. The downtown property really is benefiting disproportionately, and that needs to be stated on the record. And so, I will not support the cut, uh, because I think it would be disruptive for this season, but, uh, the debate is worthy.
Yeah, I don't support this cut, um, but, uh, what I would support is hiring additional full-time persons to the parks. I think the answer is, I mean, we have the money, all right, and, and from, from the parking fund, all right, and that, you know, and that is spent downtown, I get that, all right? Uh, so if we, if we cut this, right, then there isn't any money to allocate to a neighborhood, uh, to the neighborhood parks, all right? Um, I, I think we have a need, uh, the need downtown and neighborhood parks, uh, is such that we could have another person in the park.
Um, I think councillor Lee. Echoing, councillor Iger said, uh, so if I heard that correct, this is actually included in, so it's actually $64,000 for seasonal employees, which we've been told it's been tough to find. You could hire two part-time, you could hire two full-time people, in my opinion, at that point, give or take, to take on those duties. Also, I mean, again, the councillor, uh, what he said was spot on, why are they taking care of what DPS takes care of? So there's definitely some overlap there, and ask the administration to kind of look at that overlap of what we're spending on DPS and parks. That's just it.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond, um, as I said, for me, it's more about the time than about the money, so unfortunately, council is limited to cutting, this is the only way that you have to do this. I don't have any, you know, I don't, I, we had a long discussion actually about the parking fund, it contributing benefit, not just to downtown. So I, I have no problem taking the 12 I, I, I want to cut, and putting it into the seasonal labor, and still taking it from the downtown parking fund. I see no problem or issue with downtown paid parking providing benefit to the city. We have a long debate about that, some will remember the amendments that were made when we set up that. Uh, it's a receipt to reserve for appropriation, I believe, if memory serves. Um, so I'm just trying to make the point that you've got a seasonal labor line showing 41,000, and you've got a seasonal labor line for just downtown, 24, and the Parks Director just gave you the list of parks. I mean, that, that doesn't, nobody can make those ratios make sense. You have half as much money for, uh, you know, an eighth the number of parks. All of our neighborhood wards have parks in them, um, I don't know, I get complaints about some of them, and, and wanting to improve. So to me, this isn't a debate necessarily at this point about adding more resources, although that's not going on, it's about dividing those, those resources more equitably. And again, I just want to remind everybody that the other major big fund that we didn't talk about as much tonight is the parking fund, is sitting on a million dollar plus money, and we've had some discussions, and potentially some, some maybe ideas that we could draw it down for the waterfront park. But we've got parks we don't have yet that also need help, so that's the point I'm trying to make. And, um, you know, I, I won't make the cut on the supplies if, uh, if this one fails, just to save your time, the downtown improvement supplies.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to clarify a couple of things. Um, so I think there's a, there's a story behind why it's, the, the budget looks this way, right? We don't typically call out the same, but we, we call out seasonals twice in this budget, right? We don't typically do that because it's the funding source. In fact, in the day, that was the reason for that, because we had this new funding source, and we wanted to make, to make that direct access. Um, so I, I hear, I hear what the, what the Ward One councillor is saying, that more needs to be done at parks outside of downtown. I think we wholeheartedly agree with that, um, hence the increase for, for, for personnel in general for the Parks Department. And as you mentioned, for the Parks Director, uh, a plan to keep increasing and building more capacity, we get, get the work done, it's not going away, um, and we know how important these parks are. Um, you know, on that note, because we, we have two line items, but, you know, it's, it's, it's not like we have seasonals wearing a summer hat, or a downtown hat, and seasonals wearing a non-downtown hat. The money flows between the, the, the personalities, and we still, when that person is doing that job versus that person is doing the non-downtown job. So you would be cutting, this cut would cut down the amount of seasonal staff capacity we would have overall. So I think, I, I acknowledge what the, what the councillor is saying, I, I, you know, I think you mentioned that it's not, it's not the, the direct way of, of, of addressing your issue. But I think it's well, it's well received, and that's part of the plan going forward in future years, and we, and we would very much like to increase the amount of, uh, labor that, that could be applied to other, to other parks, to all our parks.
Further comments?
Sure. So, uh, second is by, thank you. Just to cut $12,000 from 51901, councillor Con?
No.
Councillor Lane?
No.
Councillor McCauley?
No.
Councillor Connell?
No.
Councillor Shan?
No.
Councillor Tontar?
No.
Councillor Vogel?
No.
Councillor Wallace?
No.
Councillor Z?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
No.
Councillor Igram?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, so we continue on page 209, we are just wrapping up personnel services, anybody else there? Hearing none, uh, next we have purchase of services. Supplies.
Chair?
Yes.
Uh, motion, uh, moved to, uh, cut from 54200, $1,300.
Do we have a second on that? Parks maintenance supplies?
Second.
Second by councillor Lane, councillor Devlin, do you want to speak for it?
Uh, yeah, as we have, uh, Director Reed on the phone or on the Zoom call, I was unable, I, I either didn't make the opening, or I didn't make all of it, so I, I didn't hear. This is usually an, an increase that, that I would identify and try to split, split the, uh, baby if it didn't comport with the prior year's actuals. Um, and this is an increase of 2,600, which is a significant increase from the prior year. So if the, the director wants a reply to that, I'd be fine with that.
I think she's still able to speak if she unmutes herself, uh, I believe that's where we are.
There you go, Lisa, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, this is just based on projections of, um, supplies that we must to purchase for this coming year, including, uh, many of our additional tools. And we need, we have a lot of employees producing their own tools. And, um, so I, I projected what minimally we could, um, do to replace some of those tools that are being provided personally by employees, and, um, that's what we came up with.
Anybody else?
Yeah, and I just note, year-to-date, and if you can help me out, as to what, when that was run, is over 100%, it's only 1.2% in that supply line. So maybe reasonable to go, go.
Councillor Devlin?
I mean, the list I have is the updated list that was sent to us on, uh, June 21st, 2021, so I'm assuming the year-to-date is fairly up to date, we're almost at the end of the annual budget. Just to be clear, for those that don't have this in front of them, the 101.2% is, um, of 6,373, so the increase to this line item is 41.3%.
Ready for vote?
So motion to cut 1,300, as I understand it, from 54200, parks. Councillor Con?
No.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
No.
Councillor Connell?
No.
Councillor Shan?
No.
Councillor Tontar?
No.
Councillor Vogel?
No.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Z?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Igram?
No.
No. Motion fails.
Okay, Mr. President, we continue on page 209, we're in supplies, anything else on supplies? Seeing none, uh, other charges and expenses? Seeing none, final grouping there is capital outlay. Does anybody wish to make a motion there? I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President, if I may.
Further?
Uh, cut, uh, cut 58401 from 24,000, uh, back to 12,000, and I'll speak to it if I get a second.
Second.
So I just, um, just, you know, the, the issue I have with this line is really that during the workshop, I did not get a clear understanding of what we need and what we intend to spend here. Um, we just heard that Parks Maintenance Supplies will be used for, for some tools, which I may have considered capital. I did hear that there was a, a concept of a trailer and a mower. We also have recently talked about a mower on the schools. We've also recently done some other CIP discussions, and that's forthcoming next week. So, um, I'm just proposing this in part to see if there is now any clarity that can give you some confidence that we know exactly what we're going to buy with this, and we have a clear idea of what our needs are. I would, uh, direct that to the direct, to the Parks Director, if, so if that's okay, and otherwise, we'll feel comfortable cutting it.
Please.
Yes, we have, um, three things, one is a $7,000 landscape trailer that is required to transport our, um, we purchased a steam-powered weed killer and sanitizer. That, um, it, it replaces the, so when, when the city council, uh, agreed, and Parks Commission agreed that we not be giving licenses, we, um, we have, we pursued other means of eradicating weeds on our walkways. And one is this, um, steam-powered machine that will throw weeds on our walkways. We need to transport an auto landscape trailer, so that's a $7,000 investment we have made. And then we want to buy a, um, a plow for our truck, that's $5,000. And also an enclosed trailer, which will increase our productivity by, um, by reducing the need for loading up and, uh, putting equipment away at the end of the day. And, uh, because we can keep all the equipment on the truck, uh, on the enclosed trailer, and so that's $12,000 item. And that will also help us, um, to keep our equipment enclosed, so it's not sitting around the yard, um, especially while we are sort of in transition in terms of, um, having a permanent home. But, uh, it, it, it will, it will increase our productivity, uh, regardless of whether we have a permanent home or not.
Mr. President?
Oh, this was, uh, councillor? Yes.
Yes. I have a rematch of the debate we had on the CIP, where, I, you know, I registered some frustration about, uh, duplicative equipment purchases in various departments. But the reason why I, I support the cut that's proposed here is that it doesn't even match the CIP. So for example, we closed landscape trailer, when we voted on it, we were told it was fiscal year 2023. So I, I, you know, that's $12,000 right there. So I, I, I think the proposal is well taken, I think, uh, in order to stick with what we already debated in the CIP, um, I support this cut.
Further?
Yeah, I mean, there were a number of shifts, uh, in the CIP, uh, as budget finance has, you know, the, you know, transfers to pay for the CIP, it's not just deposit fund. And so what I'm trying to figure out, if there's a, if there is a will, if there is a desire to get, you know, Parks Department more out into neighborhoods and addressing local parks, all right? And we're not hiring any more people, all right? Uh, the only way you can get them out into the local parks is by increasing their productivity. And how do you increase their productivity? Instead of having to, you know, go, go into 57th Wall Street, if that's where they are, take all the tools out every morning, load them, bring them out, all right? And then at the end of the day, take them all out and, and put them back away, all right? So you save hours every day, and that mounts up, and if you do that, you're going to get more productivity. That is, you are going to have more hours of actually working in local parks. So, you know, I'm going to oppose this, because I, I, I don't think we're, you know, it's inconsistent with what we're arguing on the floor.
Councillor?
Yeah, I guess my issue with it is, why would this not be in the CIP? I feel like this should be a discussion to have maybe at a, at a later time, um, if they have a transfer that comes in. It just seems strange that it's in the operating budget.
If I may, we have, we have a policy that, um, all expenditures under a certain dollar amount are not considered capital-proven items. So I think all of the, the items that Lisa just mentioned fall within that, underneath that $15,000 requirement. So that's why it's, it's, it's on the operating side and not considered the capital.
Further comments? Yeah, uh, councillor, uh, president, um, you know, we have this to be, um, about this, uh, about the need for this equipment. And, um, councillor Igram had referred to it, um, we have a lot, we have a lot of stuff, we have a lot of toys, Parks does, but other people do. And while we try to get our inventories right, uh, you know, Parks is a real disadvantage, I will say, uh, we are, in this, in this budget, we are hiring more people. So there will be more people here, right? And, um, you know, so in, in a way, they do need some more work, but, but it leads to other questions, right? Where are they going to park this stuff? Does it all fit somewhere? Um, we don't, we don't, we have a kind of sort of a temporary home, we don't have a longer-term home, so where are we going to park this stuff? You know, uh, the, the points that we made in CIP were that, um, you know, the schools department have three lawn mowers, and they, they're going to buy another one. Okay, well, supposedly, they only cut the infield, they only cut the infield of the grass, or the outfield of the grass. They don't cut all the school property that's done by others. So, you know, we get to the same point, which is, we have three different departments that are kind of sort of cutting the same grass and doing the same Parks work and all that. And I know there's a delineation of the work, but when we add more toys to this, and, and I'm not minimizing that, because I know it's, it's equipment that's needed, that we're, we're just kicking the eventual accountability line down, down, down the road. And I don't, I don't know if this is the, is, this is the place to, to put our, our foot in the ground and say, listen, we got to figure out who owns what, and why, right? Parks has a job to do, so we're kicking this a whole other year to get accountability to this. Uh, I don't know if, if cutting it now would, you know, make us make a, another decision and have to do a transfer later on. Uh, I'm just not sure about that. And, and this discussion is circular, right? We, you know, Parks comes in, they have a job to do, they need to, they need the tools and, and, uh, transport to be able to do it. But, you know, again, we just keep buying stuff. And so I'm really, I'm, I'm torn on this, and I probably will reject, you know, I'll probably go with the amendment simply, um, to force a larger discussion, not to, not as any, uh, message to Parks. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, no, I'm sorry.
Councillor Igram.
I'm sorry, councillor Igram, I can't.
Yeah, I just, just a response to the councillor at large about why, why we, you know, uh, we would cut an equipment expenditure. It's that I'm not seeing, unlike with other departments, I'm not seeing all the dots lighting up. With the other departments, when, you know, their CIP request matches their operating budget, we know exactly where the equipment is going to be used. We know, um, that, uh, the expenditure is going to be directly proportional to an improvement in service. What I'm identifying here is, in this case, I don't see that, I see confusion, and, uh, therefore, rather than just appropriating money that I'm not sure is complete to an improvement in service, I'd like to be more conservative and support the cut.
Further comment? Councillor Shan?
Just one quick question, did you not just say, this is directed to Matt, did you not just say that this was all not in CIP? Is there all $115,000?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but it, it, we typically don't put items under $15,000 in CIP, I don't believe they were in CIP.
Further comment? Well?
For the comment? I'm sorry, Councillor Wallace?
A question for Director Kugan, but that's not to say that if this were cut, you can still come forward with a, a transfer request if the equipment is needed. So this wouldn't completely wipe out the ability to purchase something.
Well, I think in a transfer request, we would be looking for money from somewhere else. So I think if you want to, if you want to invest it, make the investment now, I would recommend that council go forward. I think the transfer is, is something that we try to avoid and it has to come from another line item that has, that has surplus.
Councillor Shan, Councillor Tontar?
So, yeah, I'm not going to support this just because right now you were to cut and you cut back. It's going to get us in the middle of summer and we're going to be out of heat and equipment now, it sounds like. So I'm not supporting this.
Councillor Tontar?
Yeah, and, and we can't transfer from free cash until next fall. That's, I mean, it's not going to happen.
I just want, just two informational points. One is the enclosed landscaping trailer is in the CIP for 12,000.
That it is.
Parks 032, okay, page 70. And second is, you don't need free cash, you can do a supplemental budget. This money is going to go, if it does cut passes, it becomes unallocated funds. We've had this in the past. The mayor can come in with a supplemental anytime for this purpose or any other purpose. We do not have the ability to add, only to cut. So what we cut becomes unallocated funds and it's, it's not called a transfer because it's not coming from somewhere else called supplemental. So you can do.
Councillor Khan?
Yeah, actually, thank you. I was going to say that. So, yeah, it, it is in the CIP. So I, I will be supporting this amendment, um, tonight. Thank you.
Roll call?
Roll call, this is. Can I, someone, excuse me, can someone just tell me what, why are we cutting this? Because I don't understand the reasoning. I mean, I've heard it's vague. I don't think it's vague. So why are we cutting this? Just like, quick sentence.
Call and question.
Motion proceeds. Is there a second? Need a second, a motion, call a question, if. Is there a second?
Second on that? Councillor Tontar, you, anybody want to take, respond to Councillor Tontar?
I'm, I'm just unclear. I'm not going to respond to Councillor Tontar because we just heard everybody who's discussing why they would cut this. I think they've heard those answers. But I, I would say, I wasn't going to mention it because I thought the vote was going forward, but I didn't want to delay anymore. But we had a big discussion with the Capital Improvement Plan, a large debate. We just had this debate about how can we make the Capital Improvement Plan more, you know, less aspirational, more helpful? And we spent a lot of time as a council working on that this past, you know, a couple of months ago. And, and we went into more greater detail with the Capital Improvement Plan than we've ever gone into in my six years, in my sixth year on the council. And, and, you know, for it to have any meaning, if this is on for 2000, I'll give you one of the reasons I'm going to vote against it, if it's on for 2023, you know, and, and I just, it's, we need to stay consistent and, and, and we, we require that of other people in the Capital Improvement Plan. We had two very intense, you know, sessions on the Capital Improvement Plan and then followed by the budget. And, and so that, that's, that's a good reason for me. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Councillor McCauley?
Yeah.
More to answer?
Yeah, I do, I just want to tell, from my perspective, this is a process issue that I, I, I am against it, not a substance issue, right? Again, part of it is in the CIP, part of it is, you know, two months ago, we asked all departments to figure out what we have for inventory and how can we share across, share in one way, shape or form. That fell apart. A lot of things have fallen apart. It's, for me, it's a process issue. I would welcome a supplemental line item if they deemed it appropriate, but at this point, that's my.
Councillor Z?
Yeah, I wanted to answer that largest question directly. So for me, it is, there is a substance question. And the challenge is, is that, we've talked about this, the council has to come around issues through budget cuts because that's essentially our power. But there are lingering questions about Parks Department. We had a brief discussion during our workshop about the organizational structure, what the future plans are. There are things underway. And to me, continuing to pile up equipment, continuing forward on leases, apparently working on 57 Low Street for the next six months, which I didn't know about until tonight, continue, it digs the hole deeper in terms of we, we have no plan and so we're just going to keep buying stuff until somehow we crash into a plan. That's what it is for me. We made a lot of budget information requests to the credit of the administration. The vast majority of them were met. One of the ones that wasn't was, we asked for super clarity on the DPS, schools and parks. We got a mowing list, so we've got some clarity on it. And I didn't want to have this, this long conversation, which is why I didn't say it, but it is part of my, my deliberation here. So if a supplemental comes in and we have to have a debate about a trailer, then it will further the conversation about where are we going with this? How are we going to get there? And apparently, what, what else we need to do and what should happen to parks? So that's part of my deliberation.
I think now is the appropriate time.
Okay, so this is a motion to cut $12,000, 58401. Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Connell? Councillor Connell?
No.
Councillor Shan?
No.
Councillor Tontar?
No.
Councillor Vogel?
No.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Z?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Igueme?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes Workshop Six. Those were all of the departments. My suggestion is we take a recess so that the Finance Director and Clerk can put together the final order for how long? 10 minutes, 5 minutes?
Three minutes. You can't. I want to recall my. Councillor Argument, are you there? Can you start the recording?
We're beginning to be recording.
Thank you. What happened to Councillor Z?
Well said.
Yes.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the budget. We do, and we have a.
We have a motion approved as amended.
We do.
And just going to order, Mr. President? The remotes are going to get an email from Ethan with what we have just been handed momentarily. He's literally clicking the buttons right now, the final budget order reflecting the changes. So he's going as fast as he can.
In the meantime, I think I should read it into the record.
Read it? Please do so.
City of New York report raised and appropriated the general fund a sum of $74,656,611.81 as the operating budget for FY 2021, of which $33,485,466 was appropriated to the school department. Further, to support said appropriation in the, in the general fund, $1,008,313.24 is reserved for the downtown paid parking fund. Further, to support appropriations in the general fund, $105,640 is reserved to the recreational revolving fund. Further, enterprise fund budgets for FY 2022 are as follows. Water, $5,751,985.43. The approved budget represents the annual budget for FY 2022, as submitted, changes by Mayor Holliday, originally submitted May 10, 2021, and now stands amended.
Mr. Clerk, for the record, the reduction for this evening was how much?
I would ask the Finance Director as a total on that, I know.
Sure, the reduction this evening was $372,750.
Check that. Perhaps you'd like to write into the record, is what you're suggesting, summary?
I just wanted the reduction into the record. Do you feel that there's something else you'd like in the record?
In the second part of the four, three pages that was just emailed around, the reductions in the fourth column.
Anything else for anybody? Are we ready to, for roll call vote, please?
Okay, roll call for the motion to approve the budget as amended. Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Connell? I'll contact you. Councillor Z?
Yes.
You're good, thank you.
Yes.
Councillor Shan? Sorry about that. Councillor Shan, yes. Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Z?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
And Councillor Igueme?
Yes.
Fantastic. I would make a motion to adjourn.
Shalom.
Roll call, please.
Roll call on the motion to adjourn. Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Z?
Yes.